Mayor Danner, the public has been admitted.
Thank you, City Manager Seislin. I call this meeting to order of the City Council for the City of Gross Point Park. Clerk Blayhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Raylan.
He is a, he's in excused absence this evening. We did get an email from him. He'll be unable to attend.
Okay, councilmember Reed.
Here.
McConnell.
Here.
Padgett.
Here.
Robson.
Here.
Luett.
Here.
And Mayor Danner.
Here. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First order of business is the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll do support.
I think we have Councilmember Reed supported by Councilmember McConnell. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Padgett.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Luett.
No.
And Mayor Danner.
Yes, motion passes, consent agenda is adopted. The next item of business is public comment on agenda items. I'll remind the public that this item is for the agenda items only. And with that, I'll ask the City Manager to take over and if we have written comment followed by oral comment. And we have, we have a member on screen that I don't recognize and I'm not sure.
He's with our staff, Mayor Danner, that is James from McKenna. He'll be joining us.
Excellent, excellent. I haven't, I had not met him in person yet. Welcome, James. Okay, continue.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Danner. So I do have a couple of written comments. However, for this purpose, I just have one written comment regarding agenda items tonight. This comment comes from Mr. Bill Schuster. It is my understanding that Gross Point Park is on a largely separated sewer system. The stormwater leg of system collects runoff from streets, connected downspouts and conveyed to the Patterson Park pump station. The other leg collects the septic routes to our lift station then to GLWA assets. Great Lakes Water Authority asset failure is one issue. Stormwater often infiltrates into the septic leg of our system, reducing its capacity, contributing to septic sewer overflows. According to Eagle, the EERV is a type of septic sewer overflow, which would relieve an overburdened septic system, sending untreated flows to Lake St. Clair. Many believe that the septic leg of our system will be conveyed to the Three Mile Patterson Park Storm Separate Pump Station that would recombine separated storm and septic flows forming a combined sewer system. And this is exactly what is published in the October 21st issue of the Gross Point News, Kate Vanderstel, page 9A. So what will it be? A separate system with an EERV SSO relief or combined sewer overflow system? If you choose to go with the latter, then you're looking at installing your retention treatment basin to different permits. Regardless, you're looking to taxpayers who are also ratepayers to GLWA to foot the bill and pay twice for possibly redundant infrastructure that has unclear objectives and effectiveness outcomes. Mayor Danner, those are my written public comments and then I will go to spoken public comments. Where, excuse me, one second, I have one person in the queue as I share my screen. One second. Okay, and I have Mr. Ron Porter. If you could please state your name and city residence and please go ahead.
Sure, my name is Ron Porter and I live in Gross Point Park. And I'd like to comment specifically about the EERV. The two resolutions that the council will consider today appear to be relatively vague and, I guess, harmless in that they seem to just express support for what seems to be the path of the city already, which is to pursue a permit for the EERV. I would like to urge the council not to consider the EERV as anything other than a temporary Band-Aid to the fundamental situation, which is that this region and the Gross Point Park sewer system needs to be able to accommodate increased rain flow, which will undoubtedly occur over the next decades. While it's nice to think about an EERV as moving the water or the sewage from our basements, and my basement was flooded twice this year, once with 40 inches and once with eight inches. And it's nice to think that it's, it's better than, it's better to have that dumped into the, to the lake mixed with stormwater. And I agree it is, if that's a temporary solution. But what we have to remember is something that even my three-year-old relatively ill-behaved German Shepherd knows is that you don't use your cage as a toilet. And so we don't, we don't want to use our homes that way, but we also don't want to use our lakes that way. And when you look at the map, the sewage that's discharged, in the event it is discharged, from Patterson Park, will go right along the lake shore, right behind some of the most valuable real estate in Gross Point Park along Windmill Point Drive. And then it will go into Windmill Point Park, into the marina, and into the shoreline. So we don't want on a long-term basis to be discharging sewage into our backyard, in this case, our backwater. And then when we think about it more broadly, where does that water go? It goes down the Detroit River. And what's the first thing that it will hit? The, the far tip of Belle Isle. Now, the DNR has spent a lot of money lately trying to renew the environment at the tip of Belle Isle that's closest to Gross Point Park. I don't think they're going to be too happy with a lot of raw sewage showing up in Lake, on Open Aka. So we need to do this as temporary and not as a permanent solution to our sewer problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Danner, I have no more spoken public comments.
Okay, thank you. That closes public comment agenda items. We'll now move on to the manager's report, which more broadly is administration's report. So it will include a segment from our city manager as well as from our public safety director and clerk. So with that, Nick, if you want to continue.
All right, thank you, Mayor Danner, members of council and the public. So the Tifa just had a meeting last week and we addressed a couple of items in there, which I'll provide for the public tonight. Two of those are the Tifa Business and Residential Grants. The Business Improvement Grant, or BIG program, is to provide financial assistance to businesses through economic and beautification goals through the Tifa District and those recovering from COVID-19. This program will include funding for site enhancement projects such as facade improvements, signage improvements, landscaping, other architectural upgrades and sanitation upgrades. For example, enclosing garbage dumpsters and recycling. The goal of the Residential Improvement Program is to help expand the availability of off-street parking throughout the Tifa District in assistance. You know, further with that, residential property owners who own property within the district are eligible to apply. The program will provide funding for projects to residential property owners that would like to have that off-street parking. For example, some of those are pouring new concrete parking pads off the alley, pouring expanded concrete parking pads off the alley, demolition of blighted garages to concrete pad only. And I did have a recommendation to the board about including a downspout disconnection. Assistance, however, the board took that off as part of the Residential Improvement Program. Alley cleanup, the Tifa Board approved a bid for cleaning of alley shrubs, brush and weeds from Backer Landscaping. This will help the DPW, which has typically cleaned these areas in the past. Especially, there's an alley on Wayburn bordering Detroit that they've had to spend some significant time on. And this will help the DPW moving forward. And as we, we look into the spring of how we can work with our residents on alley improvement, beautification goals, you know, we're looking to, you know, clean up there now, especially when it comes to rodent harborage. The Business Association was at the Tifa meeting and/or Visit the Park, as they're known. They requested some financial support from the Tifa for marketing of Tifa businesses, which the Tifa provided, will provide $8,000 contingent upon a funding agreement signed by Tifa and the association. The DPW grand opening, the, the new DPW building is tentatively looking at a midweek groundbreaking this week and invites the council, Tifa and DPW will be sent out shortly. The dog park has been quite a success with over 250 fobs sold at this time, and we've had about 500 dog licenses purchased. However, there are some areas for improvement, and this includes with the amount of grass, we'll need some time to rest and grow this year. And that's why you see that there's been a time to, no dog park being used at this time. The master plan draft was reviewed by the Planning Commission this last week, and they recommended moving the draft plan to council for comment, which will be available at the November council meeting. Wayburn Development, the Planning Commission met with the developer last couple of weeks ago. That was actually tabled back in April of this year. And we're, the city administration and building departments working with the developer so that we can have another planning commission meeting to review their proposed development. The Small Business Administration and FEMA, for those for physical property damage, that has been extended to November 12th, 2021. So if you have not already done so through the June storm events, please do so. As well with those storm events, Gross Point Park had a significant cost of about almost $900,000 due to cleanup and damage to the public safety. Unfortunately, at this time, the state had submitted the letter for approval for public assistance. However, that was denied by FEMA. And so at this time, the state is looking to appeal that ruling, and we're seeking further help of how we can help the state with FEMA there. And as well, we do have, the City Hall building is being worked on right now. We're still working on the windows at this time and, you know, there's, we're going to have to probably look at rebidding in January for some other expenses going on with that building. In regards to the Tifa Director and the city manager, Assistant City Manager search, we're still looking for a Tifa DDA Director at this time. Certainly, if you know of any applicants, we'd be happy to have those come forth so we can take a look. As well, I'm working with Clerk Blayhut right now and finalizing a couple touches and what we're looking for in the Assistant City Manager, Public Service Director position. And so those are my comments at this time. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have before we move to Chief Geraldine Clerk Blayhut.
Okay, council, do you have anything for City Manager, Councilmember McConnell?
Good evening. Thank you, City Manager Seislin, for that thorough report. I just had a couple of questions. One was, you mentioned the cleanup of the alleys. I'm excited to hear about that. We certainly heard about that from residents. So thank you for that effort. But you mentioned the rodent harborage. So as they clean up the alleys, are they going to be addressing that as well? Or what's the status of that?
So one of the things, you know, that you have in the alleys is rodents really like to be in areas that they're hidden. So that could be, you know, let's say debris, trash, you know, significant vegetation. And so as, as the contractor will be going through, we're, our hope is that, you know, that'll prevent that harborage from happening there. And the Tifa did direct me as well. I'm actually glad you brought that up. Looking to see if there's something that we can, the Tifa can contract with a provider that can help in the Tifa District and especially the alleys to see about the cleanup.
Thank you. And I just, I don't know if there's any consideration to possibly punching up that DDA Tifa Director position. I just looked at some other ones and they, they do a little bit more of a sell. I don't know if you'd be open to that, but ours is pretty, you know, straightforward. We may want to try to punch up and tout the city a little bit more and, and maybe energize that job description. It may help us get more applicants. So just my two cents. Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Okay, I think Councilmember Luett, you had your hand up earlier.
I did, thank you. City Manager, in the report that you sent to us, there was a paragraph about the CCTV sewer cleaning, and I had a question about that. But are you going to be discussing that more when we get into the OHM part of the meeting?
Yeah, that, that was my, we, we were going to talk more about that as OHM Patrick Drosen, I will discuss further.
Okay, then I will just wait until we get to that to ask my question.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Robson.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. Nick, great report. And following up on the alley discussion, I'm pleased to see that we're hiring a one-time process by a private vendor to address the situation. But I think this speaks to what I've been thinking about a long time, and I think others, that we need to increase our code enforcement officer hours or bring in another staff person. As I understand, a code enforcement officer works two days a week. That, that really means that person is in a reactive mode rather than a proactive mode. And it is responsibility, number one, of the citizens, the property owners, to clean up their own alleys, take care of the shrubbery and what have you. But be that as it may, I think it's pretty obvious that we need to increase code enforcement. So this is my last meeting and requesting that that be considered. Next council at the next budget workshop, if they would kind of make that a priority, I think it's important. Thank you.
Okay, council, anyone else? Okay, Councilmember Luett, back to you.
Sorry, Councilmember Robinson reminded, reminded me, his comment reminded me of something that I had meant to follow up on, which was, I'm absolutely in agreement with what he is saying about code enforcement. We've talked about it at the last couple of meetings. Generally, I'd like to ask about code enforcement as it pertains to landlords and flooding, because that was an issue that we had, had touched on, where we did have some tenants who were having issues getting their landlords to respond to properly sanitizing their basements. And then specifically, we had had a couple of residents email that they had had problems getting code enforcement. They had asked for code enforcement to come out to inspect a neighboring home, perhaps a vacant home, and had trouble getting that scheduled. I know Mr. Steiger had emailed and his, it wasn't his home, it was, I believe, his father's home. There was a vacant house next door and they were having trouble getting that scheduled. So can you speak to that residence specifically and also just in general, how code enforcement is going with getting the landlords to provide the sanitation that's required for their tenants?
So I'll go with the latter first in regards to sanitation with the tenants. So, you know, this is determined on a case-by-case basis after talking with the tenants or, you know, somebody that wants to remain anonymous regarding such. And so, you know, our code enforcement officer would work with our building official and, and they would further determine if there's appropriate action to be taken. I will say that our, our building department, we did go out to several homes where those concerns were happening. And our, our building official did ask for verification that it had been cleaned by a professional contractor or the type of equipment or liquids that they were using further. And so after an inspection, we've actually had quite a bit of success in regards to visiting a couple of those homes. Regarding that specific home you mentioned, I know we actually just had another inspection out there. And we had been having some trouble actually getting the landlord to allow us to enter into the home. However, we did do an exterior view of the home and they're, they're going to be sent a letter with some significant compliance that they have to address. And further action may be necessary, you know, that I'll have to take up with the prosecutor's office.
Okay, and would you still recommend that residents continue to email building department directly if they have an issue with a vacant building?
If there's a vacant building, can, yeah, absolutely. At least let us know. I know there was one case where we did not, they had not turned in their vacant property registration. So obviously, if you can provide us that address or you have a concern, please do so to our building department at building@grosspointpark.org or codeenforcement@grosspointpark.org.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I just want to echo those same comments. I've had some residents reaching out to me and I've been in communication with City Manager on some vacant properties and stepping up code enforcement there. Some of these have been going on for quite a while and neighbors are frustrated. So I don't know if it's a manpower issue. But there are some vacant properties around, whether they're registered or not. I don't know the answer to that. But the residents are concerned with the maintenance of the properties that, that they're not being maintained to city code.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes, to follow up, Councilman Luett, and the property in question, that's 1141 Wayburn. And I'm happy to see that our city prosecutor is with us tonight. It's rather apparent that the property owner of 1141 Wayburn has no interest in approving that property or bringing it up to code. They keep ducking and hiding. So I'm asking the city, as I have in the past, to throw the book at this homeowner, and I hope that, just making our city prosecutor aware of the address, 1141 Wayburn. The administration can help you with the, the name of the homeowner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, I think we'll move on to the Director of Public Safety, I believe.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public. I just wanted to go over a couple of things real quick. First of all, we've recently gone through the process of replacing all the automatic external defibrillators, AEDs, throughout the city. They were all beyond their useful life. And actually, they were no longer serviceable. We couldn't even get new batteries for them anymore. We also found that there were areas of the city that didn't even have one, such as Patterson Park. So we are now in the process of replacing all of them, and we will acquire enough to ensure that there's one at every appropriate location throughout the city. Kind of on that same note, when we were looking at replacing the AED for our ambulance, we would prefer to obtain what they call the Zoll X Series Cardiac Monitor and AED. This is a device that has the following capabilities. It's an AED. It continued, it does blood pressure monitoring, it looks at blood oxygen levels, and it can be set up automatically to take the patient's vitals so that the EMT doesn't have to continue to stop whatever they're doing to recheck vitals. This machine will automatically recheck them at whatever intervals we set. It's, it's very rugged. It was designed for military use. But probably the most important feature is it has a 12-lead EKG. This will enable our EMTs to perform and transmit via Bluetooth a patient's EKG directly to the hospital. And based on the information received, the hospital can activate their cardiac catheterization team so that the patient bypasses the emergency room and goes straight to the catheterization lab, significantly reducing the damage to the heart and saving lives. So why is this important? The cardiac muscle, muscle does not regenerate as other issues and organs in our body do. Once the cardiac muscle dies, it stays dead. Eliminating the wait time in the emergency room is crucial to reducing the damage to the heart. And I want to give you two quick examples. My father suffered a heart attack when he was 64 years old. His symptoms were, he had a severe pain in his back. He thought it was just something that he did lifting wrong. And he went to his chiropractor. Chiropractor recognized that he was having a cardiac event, had his office assistant drive my father to the emergency room where he sat. And he sat in the emergency room for quite a while. And finally, somebody in the emergency room went up to the, the nurse in charge and said, I think this guy is having a heart attack over here. And it was then and only then that they took him back. He suffered about 60% loss of his heart muscle that he never regained and which altered his lifestyle from then on. The second example is one that I think most of us will, will recognize as being really important. My, one of my officers, Lieutenant Terry Hayes, this past summer was camping with his family. When he suffered a cardiac event, he had some pains, some shortness of breath, and extreme tired. And so they called an ambulance. The EMTs that showed up had a 12-lead cardiac monitor, like the ones we want, the one we want to get. They were able to send the EKG to the hospital and they realized that it was, I forget which artery it is, but it's the one that feeds the bottom of the heart, which they call the widow maker. They were able to see that that's where the problem was. He bypassed the emergency room completely, went right straight to the catheterization lab where they inserted a stent. And I can say that three weeks later, he's back to work full-time. So it's really an important, important item that I would like the, the council to consider. So I'm going to be bringing that back to council in November for your consideration and hopefully your approval. The next item is, I just want you to know, your Public Safety Department has begun the preliminary stages of seeking state accreditation. One of the things that we realized was that the city does not have an employee assistance program or EAP, which I was, both Nick and I were both kind of surprised that we didn't have one. So I'm happy to report that Mr. Seislin signed the agreement today with CARE of Southeast Michigan. This program will provide up to five counseling sessions for all of our employees and their immediate family members in the area, in areas such as marriage, grief, financial, substance abuse, and much, much more. One thing I particularly like about this, the services that they offer is critical incident debriefing. So if my officers experience critical incidents such as the death of a child, serious car accidents, any of those number of things, they will come in and do a critical incident debriefing. Their services are 100% confidential and are at no cost to the employee. And we're going to be able to cover every employee in the city, both full-time, part-time, and seasonal for an annual cost of about $2,800, which I thought was pretty reasonable. Next, we're about to acquire Autism 911 rescue bags. The Autism 911 rescue bags are designed to give officers the tools they need to help de-escalate encounters with those suffering from autism. Many police encounters activate and actually overstimulate sensory triggers for those with autism, such as the flashing lights, the sirens, the shiny badges, collar brass, and there's other indicators that can all serve as a trigger. When officers deploy the bag, it has the items to help settle and distract. There are noise-dedning headphones, weighted blankets, snacks, toys and trinkets. The bag can be used for anyone on any spectrum of autism, verbal to non-verbal. And to that end, I want to just read to you a, an email that I received from the sheriff of Monroe County. He said that they had two incidents. One, the first one was a juvenile who suffered from autism, was being very aggressive towards their mother when the officers arrived. The deputy began talking with him and gave him some of the toys out of the bag. It immediately changed his mood and he began to cooperate. From the deputy, he said, I believe it helped tremendously and it would recommend using these bags with anyone that has autism. The second incident involved a four-year-old juvenile and who was wearing Lego brand pajamas and who was found walking in the intersection of M125 and Dunbar Road. The individual was non-verbal. Therefore, the deputy retrieved the Lego necklace from the bag and the individual immediately became attentive and relaxed. The deputies placed the weighted blanket on the ground and began to interact with the child. And a short time later, the mother called central dispatch to report her son missing. So they were able to reunite the child with the, the mother. We are going to be getting these on November 3rd here at the Department of Public Safety. I'm inviting the council to attend as well as we've invited the media, and they will be there to cover. I believe we're going to be one of the first in the area to, to have these, to be able to, to use them and deploy them. And finally, we've talked a lot in the past about the Integrated Public Alert and Warning System, or IPAS. Well, I'm proud to announce that through the diligent, hard efforts of Chris Powell, one of my employees, we have received full authorization from FEMA to use the IPAS system. I hope we never have to use it, but we will remain current in our training and monthly testing. I hope we never have to use it, but we will remain current in our training and monthly testing just in case. And with that, if you have any questions of anything I've talked about, I'd love to answer for you.
Also, Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mayor Chief. Thanks very much. Very impressive report. I want to thank you. Since you've come on board, you have been very proactive and really very helpful. In a lot of the areas and I appreciate that very much. Question about the new AEDs, how many are there? With this new.
We just bought five and then we're getting an additional one for the station. So. For example, Patterson Park never had one. We're getting the one for Patterson Park. The Cork bought one. Two are going to Whitt Mill Point Park and one, I think in City Hall.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Flue.
Thanks. Um, thank you, Chief. There's, it sounds like there's a lot of innovative stuff going on, which is really exciting. That was a really interesting report. One thing I wanted to follow up on which I forgot to ask about last month is. When we have our our monthly committee reports, I always try to ask if 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 someone doesn't get to it. Ahead of me asking the question, I always try to remember. To ask if our DPS is still having the monthly meetings with the N double A CP.
Yes, we just started those back up again this month.
Okay, so have you had the meeting this month? Is there anything to report from that?
We have had it. No, this month they primarily talked about mental health response. And so again, you know, like the the nine one one rescue bags that we're going to be doing for autism. Again, we're probably the first ones doing that. I didn't even know this came about pretty quickly. I didn't even know about these to talk about at the meeting, but I certainly will pass that on to them. Because I think it's a great tool for all of us to have.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McConnell.
I'm curious, do you have any update from the advisory committee?
We can do that under commission committee reports if you like, or no, it's up to the chief.
I'm fine either way.
We did have our first kickoff meeting. A couple of things came out of it. Some of the things are obviously beyond our control, as you can imagine. Most of the discussion centered around traffic complaints and so forth. And I did tell everybody that we, well, we we had that speed trailer that we used to be able to deploy around the city. And I asked one time, I said, well, how how old is that speed trailer? And usually when I ask how old is something, I am first met with laughter. And then they always say, well, it's gross point park old. So I talked to one of my lieutenants and he said, well, I've been here for twenty-five years and it was here when I got here. So we now have purchased and acquired two of the speed. The like the the box that mounts on poles that's portable. We can move it anywhere in the city and we have been. It's been on Avondale, it's been on Lake Point, I believe it's going to be up on. Charlevoix, we've been moving it all around. And the the nice thing about these boxes is. Through your cell phone, you can get all the data downloaded. First of all, the batteries will last, I believe it's up to two weeks. So we can leave it in one location for two weeks. But we don't have to take it down, plug it in or anything. We can actually get the data downloaded via our cell phones on an app. And we can look at all kinds of different data, speeds, the time of the day that it's occurring. So that that helps me from an enforcement standpoint. If people always call in and say, people are speeding up and down my street like crazy. And when we always say, do you have a time? A specific time or a more common time so that I can assign an enforcement detail out there and usually people don't. Well, this kind of information on these speed control boxes, they do give me that information. So if there is a problem. We can identify times of the day, day of the week and so forth for enforcement action. Pretty much after that, some things were brought up about the Panda program and the schools. We have not, or I have not readdressed that with the schools as of yet. I'm waiting for our time. We're actually going through. Some issues with the safe routes to schools program. And so we want to iron those out before we jump onto something else. And and that was pretty much it for the introductory meeting. I just wanted to to get everybody together, talk about some things, you know, get to know each other was really what it was all about.
Thank you.
Anything else before we move on?
I would like to say one thing, I, as of last week, I am now fully certified as a police officer in Michigan again.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's, I think we can move on to. The city clerk. For a quick report on the election process.
Yeah. Hello, Mayor Danner and members of city council. I wanted to briefly explain the process of the replacement ballots. When Wayne County notified the city of the designation error of the office of municipal judge on Tuesday, October twelfth. We immediately contacted the State Bureau of Elections on what process should be followed to correct our error. When there is a local election and a candidate brings in their nominating petitions and affidavits. We immediately verify the signatures are valid, comparing them to the signatures on file with the state qualified voter file. Once that has been completed, we mail, we email copies of the petitions and affidavits to the county. The county then checks to make sure everything is adequately completed on the form submitted. When the filing deadline passes, there are three days to allow a candidate to withdraw. Once the three day withdrawal date passes, the county prepares a proof ballot for the city to approve. Unfortunately, the county aired and did not include the designation on the ballot proof and the proof. And my office aired and not catching that error. When an incumbent candidate is running for municipal judge, petition signatures are not required. However, a new candidate must obtain a minimum of twenty-five signatures and no more than fifty signatures. And the affidavit is required for all municipal judge candidates and is submitted to the county and to the state. By law, the city was required to send out replacement ballots. I was in contact with the state and Wayne County as questions arose throughout the day, along with the advice of our city attorney. The state directed my office the process in which to ensure the integrity in the election process was undertaken. We printed labels designated original. And these ballots were placed on the ballots verified by the county election department and state bureau of elections. That was received to date, which at that time there were approximately seven hundred and fifty. We then printed labels with the designation replacement. That we attached to the inner envelope of the replacement ballot before being mailed out. By the designation of the ballot, we will, we will be able to readily see which category to file the ballot as they must be maintained separately. As we receive the replacement ballots back, we will check to make sure an original ballot has not been received. If it has been, we separate the original ballot into a third category of ballots that will be maintained, however, not voted. If a voter elects to vote the original ballot, this vote would be counted. At eight o'clock, when the polls close, all original ballots not replaced. Will be brought to the absentee counting board to begin the process of vote of voting these ballots. All replaced originals will be sealed in a locked container to eliminate any chance of double votes. We have to wait until eight PM to make sure. The replacement ballots have not been sent in throughout the day before we can tabulate any ballots marked original. As of today, we sent, we have sent out two thousand four hundred and thirty-three ballots. And we've received twelve hundred and five of those ballots back. Of the twelve hundred and five, the original ballots make up nine hundred and twenty-six. So there are many people who are still just submitting the original ballot. So that's where we at this, and if anyone has any questions.
Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Clerk Blayhat. Just some questions, I think. These are just sort of to reassure the public some more about the process. If you could discuss. Who is in the room? When you're doing a sorting of ballots, both. Who does that before election day and then at eight o'clock at night? What personnel is in the room while that process is taking place?
Okay, we keep the replacement ballots in a locked office, like all the ballots are locked at night so that they're they're safely protected. So during the election day, as we are getting ballots in, I have Courtney Delmage, who's my deputy clerk, Linda Boyle. And Donna Costa and myself. So when we're replacing the ballots and making sure all the numbers count, we balance all the totals out every day to make sure that we're all in sync. So when somebody brings in a replacement ballot, we take out the original ballot if they voted it. And we write on there that the replacement ballot was received with the date and time. And then we put that in a locked box so it doesn't get double counted. Then when we take on at eight o'clock at night, when we know that all the replacement ballots have come in and we've checked all the original ballots. Whatever original ballots are left, we know those ballots are valid and can be counted. So then we go through the process of checking the signatures, checking them all in. We then bring them up to the absentee counting board and we have six people that are working up there, two per each two precincts. And I'll have my staff up there and I'll also be up there. And so then we go through the process of checking in the the ballots, we open them, we separate them and then. It'll be by precincts one and two, four and seven, and five and six. And remember, three is part five.
Right.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah, so are there, well, is there anybody from the state or the county who will be overseeing this or any outside observers?
Nope, no, there will be outside observers. Anybody can be a poll watcher or a challenger. And all they have to do is come in that day and they can, they can go up in the absentee counting board. The thing is, when they come in, they can't leave until eight o'clock at night. So just so if anybody's going to have a poll watcher there, they need to know that. And they can't bring their cell phone either.
Okay, they. They can't leave until after, after the the ballots are counted, which will be after eight o'clock, right?
Well, it would be eight, no, they by law can leave by eight o'clock. We're not going to be able to start counting the original ballots until eight PM. So I don't know how many ballots, like right now we have nine hundred and twenty-six. That could take hours. So I don't know how many more originals we'll get in. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jane. That was a good report and I think very helpful.
I actually have a question for some reason. My camera has just decided not to work, so.
Oh, okay. McConnell, I recognize your voice.
That's good. So I had two, well, one, I just, just to clarify, because it's still can be a little bit confusing. If people have already sent their ballot in and they don't want to make any changes, they don't have to do anything. Is that correct, clerk?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and the other thing I wanted to ask is, do we have a sense of what the cost will be for having had to resend these out?
No, I don't know that yet. We won't, we don't even have the cost on anything yet. So as soon as we get those in, I can report back to council.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you for for that report. Council, thank you for your discussion. We'll now move on to committee and commission reports, which we have a few. The first one would be beautification, which our representative would be Councilmember Reland, who was has excused absence this evening. He did send a note to me to say that the next beautification committee meeting. Will be the tenth of November at seven PM. And that the beautification award ceremony will be the eighteenth of November at seven PM and more details. So we'll come at the next council meeting. I don't know if anyone else here attended beautification and has additional information to share or not, but that was shared by Councilmember Reland. Okay, I think we're good. So beautification had met on October sixth. Now we'll move on to planning commission. Planning commission just met last week, October the twentieth, and Councilmember Hodges is our representative on planning. And I'll ask her to give a report. I believe the city manager touched on perhaps the most important thing, but you may have something to add.
Yes, you're correct, Mr. Mayor. The city manager did a great job of updating us. So the only things that I will add to that would be that we did. Assign roles to some new folks. We have a new interim chair, Michelle Lindsay. So welcome to her, as well as a new vice chair with Amy Chesterton. And we should also take this moment to honor Malik Goodwin for his service. His departure is what prompted the need to fill those vacancies. So thank you very much to him for all that he has contributed to the city, particularly given his skill set, which was. In alignment with all that is required of a planning commissioner. In addition, relative to the master plan, I would just really encourage our residents to visit GPPmasterplan.com to input any feedback they might have. And one additional item that came up as part of that discussion was the opportunity to perhaps corral a list of all. Land parcels of land owned by the city so that we have a summary of that and we can fully leverage. Those pieces and ensure a highest and best use or highest and best solution, so to speak. So that we can advance the values established within the master plan. So I think that was worth noting. And that is all I have to contribute relative to the planning commission.
Okay, thank you. Tiffa met on October nineteenth. City manager also already reported the highlights. Did you have any to add to that or have you covered it?
I believe I covered all, Mayor Danner. Thank you.
I think you did. Okay, so good. And SEMCOG, Councilmember Reed is our representative to SEMCOG and I believe has a report.
Yes, thank you. I attended the SEMCOG general assembly on October fourteenth. At the Ford House and just sort of by way of background for the public's edification. SEMCOG is our regional planning partner with other local member governments in the Southeast Michigan region, which include. Livingston, McComb, Monroe, Oakland, St. Clair, Washtenaw and Wayne Counties. They support local planning with technical data and intergovernmental resources. Focused on improving the quality of the region's water. Improving and making the transportation system safer and more efficient. And economic revitalization development and support. And through that partnership, we have access to planning data and maps, legislative and policy resources, training and continuing education. And grant opportunities. At the meeting at the general assembly, it was announced that SEMCOG. Excuse me, just awarded three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in planning assistance funding for. Transportation equity and sustainable infrastructure to local communities for nine projects. So that's. Obviously something that we want to consider in the future when we have projects looking to SEMCOG for their grants and they also are a resource. And I know the city manager knows this for other grants that are available. The regional update focused on transportation trends, including. The decrease in automobile crashes, but the increase in crash related fatalities in our region. Education and workplace with a focus on the pivot to remote work. And displaced workers along with the. The fact that more office buildings and schools were demolished than were built in recent history. Infrastructure was a major focus of the general assembly and that included water systems management. And someone on the panel for discussing the region's water. I asked how how we get the regional water wastewater fixed, which includes increased capacity and resiliency. Didn't get a clear answer from this panel. Michigan is likely to receive around six billion from the infrastructure package. The panel agreed that that will be below our need. So that's somewhat sobering, but that's information that was shared. We also had a DT representative as one of the panelists. Many attendees. Raised concerns about repeated outages. They were similarly situated communities, older, inner ring suburbs. The short term solution from DTE, and I know this is a concern in our community because we've had multiple power outages. And long term ones for some of our residents. Their short term solution is an aggressive tree trimming program. The panelists discussed burying wires. About thirty percent of their system is underground, but that's primarily focused on newer suburbs. And she did state cost is a factor there. There were also some. Broader legislative updates from Washington and Lansing and what dollars may be flowing to local communities for infrastructure. The broad priorities being transportation, water, energy and broadband. And then finally. We still don't have final guidelines on the spending of the ARPA funds. I looked today, I didn't see that anything was updated on that. I may have missed it, but they do expect those guidelines to be released any day. And that's my update.
Okay, thank you. Good update. SEMCOG is a terrific resource for for all the cities in southeastern Michigan, so that's great. Eastside Community Network is an organization, is a community organization that works after the Mac corridor and Councilmember Hodges is our representative in that group. And I believe she has a report as well.
Yes, just briefly, Mr. Mayor, as a nice companion to our master plan, I think it's worth noting that. The Wayne County Retail Recovery Plan was released. I have distributed that to our Gross Point Park Business Association, the Gross Point Chamber of Commerce, as well as, of course, our own city manager. And our master plan. the Gross Point Chamber of Commerce, as well as, of course, our own city manager and our master planning M K S K firm, so that they have that data to support the data gathering that's occurring as part of the master plan process. And then just on the soft but fun side, residents might wanna take a gander down Mac Avenue sometime soon. A cloverleaf pizza is about to open in the old Artona Taylor Building, and the Shell Station will be expanding too. So that's all I have to report on the Eastside Community Network.
Okay, thank you. That closes committee and commission reports, so we'll move on to unfinished business. There was a typo in the agenda. Council comment normally happens at the end of the section, so we'll do council comment at the end of unfinished business. And so we'll start out with the resolutions, E E R V and regional collaboration. At the last council meeting, Councilmember Hodges suggested that, that these resolutions be developed with the administration for discussion by council. And I'm gonna turn it back over to Councilmember Hodges to introduce this topic. Senator McConnell, you have something before we start it?
I do. I was just wondering if we could switch the order to get the update on the system to inform us before we take up the resolutions.
I, I think this is, order is okay, because there's no perfect order, since the update on the system actually leads directly into the first item on due misses. So I think that regardless of where we are on our own internal projects, these resolutions, I think, stand on their own merit or don't. So I think let's, let's continue with the, with the sequence on the agenda. Councilmember Hodges.
I'll work to get straight to the point. I think as the elected body, it's our job to empower the city manager with tools that accelerate his ability to remedy our infrastructure needs. So in tandem with this, our engineering team, he's certainly working to push us towards those solutions. And I think we can empower him further tonight by advancing two resolutions. The first of which is a resolution calling for Eagle, the Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy to work with us, the city of Gross Point Park, to construct the E E R V, the Extreme Emergency Relief Valve. That's been under discussion and that has been under the tutelage of our city manager as he works to push that forward. This minute measure would allow us to take matters into our own hands and not wait for others by applying the kind of pressure that I think gets results. City Manager Seisler, I defer to you to, if you have any additional context to add, and if there's not any. Mr. Mayor, would you like me to read the resolution, or how would you like to proceed in opening it up for discussion?
I think before we get into discussion, since it's a resolution, if we get a motion on the floor to adopt, and then second, then we can discuss it amended if necessary and, and either vote on it or, or table it. So that would be the process I'd prefer if we wanna put a motion on the floor.
I would make that motion that we approve a resolution, a resolution calling for Eagle to work with the city of Gross Point Park in pursuit of a permit to construct the Extreme Emergency Relief Valve.
Okay, council discussion. City manager has something to, to start us off with, to help us with our discussion, I presume.
Yeah, yes. So thank you, Mayor Danner and members of council. And I wanted to address something that came up in public comment tonight, and I know it's on a lot of residents' minds, so I wanna clear some stuff up. You know, as, as part of these storm events we've had over the last couple of years, there's obviously a need for updating our infrastructure. Our water, our sewer, it's a dire need. We're talking about the federal level and the state level. I wanna be very clear that this E E R V is not our one-all solution. This is a part of the broader plan in updating our infrastructure and providing us that relief. In no means is this E E R V going to help everything out. We all have to band together in regards to how we address our sewer and water infrastructure. This is just a part of the puzzle that provides us a relief that other communities do have within their, the system along Lake St. Clair and others. And this is something that I've had some, very, very many discussions with Great Lakes Water Authority there. They believe that this will help out their system as well down at, down at Connor and Frood. And when we look forward with this resolution tonight, I want everyone to remember that we wanna do this the right way. We wanna make sure that we're going about the proper process. We go through the permit, we go through everything that gives confidence to our voters, to our residents, and to those around our surrounding communities. And so as we pursue this tonight, I just want everyone to know that, you know, we're gonna do this right. And I believe with the team at O H M and our D P W department, we're gonna get there. So I just wanted to start with that before everyone has their discussions. Thank you.
I think, I think I'll lead it off actually with a, with a little, with a comment. The concept of an E E R V has, has been discussed by Public Works with our engineering firm and the administration and certain, and members of council, particularly the Public Service Committee in the past and for many years. The, there had, has been some preliminary design work done actually by our engineering firm, previous engineering firm before we hired O H M. And there's been discussions for many years actually with Eagle in an attempt to pursue the permitting process for this going forward. The city has been in the past thwarted in the permitting process, not so much by a denial, but more by a lack of, of action and focus on the part of Eagles, so that it's not a question of over the years, it has not been a question of, no, you guys can't do this, or you can do this if you do that. It was very difficult to get them to realistically engage. They have engaged since the recent flood activity this past summer. And, and what this does is indicate to Eagle that this council, at least the overall intent is to indicate to Eagle that this council is behind this as a component of our infrastructure improvement plan. So with that, I'll open it up to council for further, further discussion on the resolution at hand. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Just a few questions for city administration. I, I assume this, we reviewed this with our city attorney?
Uh, yes, with Mr. Hall.
Okay, and then in terms of, I mean, I've had some discussions with this city manager, and I assume many of us, if not all of us have, we are in the E E R B process with Eagle. Is that correct?
We have provided a talking point, er, excuse me. We've provided a ten-point, short, medium, long-term list that we are actually at number three or four right now, and how we'd like to get there to gain confidence from Eagle. And so Mr. Drew, Patrick Droz, our senior engineer and I in D P W are continuing those conversations. So to answer your question, yes, we are in that process to get towards, how do we get that permit?
Okay, and what, what is indicated in the resolution are quite a few of those steps that we've undertaken.
That's correct.
Correct, and we've communicated that to Eagle, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then just a couple of questions about, we had two public comments. And yes, I understand the pros and cons and the concerns with the E E R B, and I appreciate your comment that I think in essence, you agree that this is a temporary fix and not a long-term solution. But we're probably looking at the next big storm before we're looking at, well before we're looking at the permanent solution. And if I understand what you're saying, we can get to this part, this short-term interim temporary solution, whatever you wanna call it, quicker before we're gonna get to a more long-term regional solution with our partners. Is that what you're saying?
That is what I'm saying, yes.
And then the other thing with Eagle, and I think you've, can, excuse me, conveyed this to me. They haven't given us a clear timeline on how long it's gonna, you know. Well, I know we have to show them some things that we've done, but do we have a timeline, assuming we check the boxes for them? Is there a timeline from them on the permitting process? That's first part of the question. If, if you know, maybe they haven't given it to us.
At this time, they haven't give us that exact timeline, and that, and those are those questions we're asking Eagle to provide us. You know, what would it take to get there? And I'll defer to your next question.
Okay, and then what is, assuming tomorrow or next week or whatever, whenever we had the permit, what is the timeline for construction and ultimate having, ultimately having the E E R B operational? Do we have an estimate there?
Patrick Droz, do you have any comment in regards to what your best estimate would be if we had everything that we're seeking? I know it's tough to guess.
Sure, so based on typical construction and what we're looking at for this type of improvement, assuming we were to have a design ready to go for permits right now, you know, typically, there, it's gonna be a bidding phase that we would go through, which, you know, typically is maybe a month or so. And then contractor would acquire materials and construct an improvement. And the nature of this particular improvement would be some fairly large diameter sewer pipes, manholes, and then connecting into Patterson Park Pumping Station. And that type of project is typically on the order of a four to five-month type project to get constructed, including lead time and final restoration. So that's kind of basically if permits are ready to go right now. As everyone is well aware, one of the conditions of getting the permit is, is going to be having operating procedures in place about when the valve would be operated, under which types of storms, how, how much it would be open, how that would be recorded in terms of document release. That's all work that's being worked through with the modeling efforts that are underway. And as you'll see in the packet later tonight, flow metering was a large component of that. Eagle had requested specifically that calibrated model was prepared, and that includes this flow monitoring. So getting those meters in the ground and getting the data, and we need a few decent rain events to have that, and that's a few months' process.
Okay, a couple more questions still. Is this the E E R B that we're looking into? Is that a C S O or an S S O?
This particular, we are having a sanitary sewer overflow to a storm system. So it's really more of an S S O.
Okay, and then is the design, and I don't, I assume it's not designed yet. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, but will, hopefully, the design take into consideration an outflow that's going to have the least amount of impact, addressing some of the comments from one of the residents tonight? Because we have a shoreline with homes and parks and a marina and other parks, et cetera, on downstream. So is there any way for the design to factor that in to have the least amount of impact to those types of places?
Absolutely. So in the, in the name of, of the E E R B, I wanna really focus on extreme. And the type of events that we're talking about, that this would be operated, are the types of events that we saw over the summer that were well beyond the design threshold requirements based on what Eagle's asking for right now. Right now, that is the twenty-five-year, twenty-four-hour storm event, which is around four inches of rain over a twenty-four-hour period, which we know we, we well exceeded. So with that in mind, the, the goal of this is to be used very frequently. The system itself, as currently devised, does not have screening or disinfection as part of it. And that's pretty typical of, of these extreme overflow type systems, where they are really kind of just used for these extreme events and not part of normal operations. Now, within the G L W A system, there are overflows, combined sewer overflows to the Detroit River and Rouge River. Those are much more frequently used, many times in storms that are even less than a ten-year event. And with those, they are required by the state to have, especially when they're newly constructed, to have water quality measures, so that's either screening or disinfection. For instance, Connor Creek, there's a very large screening and disinfection system in place there. So, and there are many of unregulated or untreated overflows as well that are really just more, they were part of the old sewer system that was never, never really dealt with. So it's, it continues to be an effort by G L W A to, to deal with those. And this being a new one, and that's where I think some of the outreach to Eagle right now about expressing the necessity of something like this is an important conversation to be having, because it, it does, it goes outside of what they're typically issuing permits for these days.
Okay, so is there, is there a reason to not add screening and disinfection to what we're looking at? Is it cost prohibitive?
It's, it is expensive item, and, and there's additional operation and maintenance costs to do that. And so that's, that's one of the things that we, when we talk about level of service, when we advance the sewer modeling and some of the public engagement, there'll be an understanding of what that cost is relative to the other improvements that might be possible.
And then I guess I'll, I'll ask one more question, then I'll see to someone else. Is there any value, and this is maybe for the city manager, we had an exchange, is there any value to, or possibility really, to having an Eagle representative come to city council? And present to us and for us to have, have that sort of interaction and hear from our residents, because I think that's maybe a piece that's missing. They, they're, you know, in Lansing presumably, or wherever their offices are, they don't necessarily know the realities of what we're experiencing and how we're experiencing it. So if there's a possibility for doing that, I would encourage it. You know, just the way we had D T E come to our meetings and Great Lakes Water Authority come to our meetings. I think it's important for these entities to hear from us, to hear from the elected body and to hear from the residents. So I would encourage that is a way to maybe cut through some of this. And then I will be done with my comments and questions for now.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on council? Councilmember Flut?
Thanks. I actually had that in my notes as well, that it would be nice to have someone from, from Eagle to answer some of our questions before we move forward on something like this. If you recall, this came up obviously a few months ago, and I said at the time that I would prefer not to be presented with a yes or no vote on any E E R B without a great deal of information that I could look at. I, I agree, the resolution is fairly vague, and I would like to see some very specific information about how it would work. I was, I'm, I'm surprised, and I do wanna clarify with Mr. Droz. So we are talking about, even if, even if used rarely, we are, we are not talking about having a retention pond or anything like that. We are talking about untreated sewage being dumped into the lake. Is, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, again, it's for very rare instances, but yes, that would be what it would do.
Okay.
I would like to, I'll just jump in a little bit and remind council that what we're, what this resolution does is that it doesn't anticipate that we have the design and we have all the parameters in place. It, it specifically is saying that council wants Eagle to work with Gross Point Park on this topic. It's, if you really get to the bottom line, it's just encouraging all the parties to work together to get to a good solution.
Right, and, but something else I've mentioned before is that what I've learned is to not vote on anything unless I have specific information. So is there any reason, the city manager is already moving forward with Eagle on this, correct? This is already being explored. So there's certainly no reason why this can't continue to be explored as an option for us, because I'm not, I'm not saying it should not be an option. But he's already begun exploring this. We can continue to move forward with exploring this and getting more information and more specifics about how it would work, correct?
Correct, and my intent with this resolution tonight is getting the council's support of the city staff and engineers to continue pursuing this and asking those questions. And as the mayor stated as well, you know, have those conversations. And obviously, if there's any designs that we need to consider and, you know, have those discussions.
Okay, so I, I guess, what, what kind of, what kind of a expense are we looking at here? If we do it without a retention pond to do treatment, what, what's a general ballpark figure on what this project would cost?
We're looking at right now an estimate about one point two million dollars.
Okay. So again, I mean, my, my point of view is. I see no reason why we can't continue to explore it, gather all the information with Eagle. I myself personally would prefer not to. Approve or vote yes on something until I have much more specific information. Especially keeping in mind that that it can continue to be explored as an option.
Right, my, my sense is that. The, that. Really, this is to show political support for the administration and to be able to use that as a lever to continue to get Eagles prompt. Response, response and participation. In the, in the process, the political, we as a political body really just to add weight to the city managers. Efforts in the, along with our engineer. Councilmember McConnell?
So along those lines, just to clarify, because you indicated that maybe they were a little bit tepid in the past about having these discussions. And so we are not going to, I guess, hurt ourselves by. Adopting this, because the language is sort of giving guidance to Eagle, so are we feel like there's any potential backlash by us passing this?
It's, it's, it's not a final approval of the ERV by any means, but it is a, it it shows support for moving down the path.
No, no, I'm asking in terms of how Eagle will receive us doing this, not, not, yeah. Since they've been, they've been tepid in the past, we're not going to hurt ourselves by taking this action, that's what I'm asking you to clarify. Patrick, city manager Seisler, Mayor Dinner?
Yeah, last evening's presentation.
Yeah, I don't believe this would hurt our ability at all, I think it would only strengthen it, you know, obviously I'm having those discussions, our DPW and our engineer. And knowing that a public body is behind us as well, I, I don't see any, you know, Eagle at the end of the day wants to, you know, help out Gross Point Park and other residents in the Southeast Michigan District. Obviously, you know, making sure that there's parameters set in place, which part of this resolution discusses, so. I don't see Eagle having any hesitation towards this resolution.
Thank you.
Or anything else, Mayor Pro Tim Robson?
Thank you, Mayor Dinner, you know, I think this is a common sense resolution. In, in the big picture, it's another tool in our toolbox. I'm at ease in that the city manager, Mr. Drows, have indicated that if this does get approved and built. It will be, as it says, an extreme emergency release valve. It would take something like the flooding we had or the water problems we had in June. For something like this to kick in, so we're all excited, we want to move forward and again, this is just another tool in our toolbox, thank you.
Councilmember Reed?
Just one more quick comment, assuming this all goes through and Eagle goes through. Any construction of an ERV is going to have to come back to council, it's going to have to be designs and and public comments and all of that, so this is.
Right.
You know, this is just, I think, to Mayor Dinner's point, one step. But it's certainly not the final step by any stretch for us, for Eagle or for the residents, correct?
The one piece of the puzzle, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hodges?
And just add Mayor Dinner, I, I really believe this is what our residents are expecting of us, you know, we had a cat, we've had catastrophic events, there's urgency to this and. It, it's within our lane as the elected body to impose pressure and strategic, very strategic and careful pressure wherever we can. So I see this as a very appropriate role, the timing issues with Eagle and the challenges we've had, the fact that our engineers are recommending it. Are all reasons to continue to push and give and empower our staff team with what they need to put that pressure on the bodies that can help us solve the solution, so. I stand firmly behind moving forward with this and would call the question.
Okay, let's call it, let's call the question, I think we've had a pretty good discussion, call the roll please.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Flut?
No.
And Mayor Dinner?
Yes, motion passes, resolution has been adopted, thank you. We have another resolution before us and I'll again ask Councilmember Hodges to introduce it.
Yes, simply said, the second resolution calls for collaboration between jurisdictions for the purpose of accelerating sewer system solutions. We know this isn't just a gross point park issue and it would behoove us to formalize a relationship with similarly disposed jurisdictions and to formalize what's already happening, I, you know, salute our city manager for pulling. The various bodies and entities together informally and by formalizing that, we will improve and enhance and bolster our ability to get to the solutions. The rationale is laid out in the resolution, I'm happy to read that if you think it would be appropriate. But I will turn it back to you and the administration to add any additional meat to the bones of that basic presentation.
Okay, should we get a motion on the floor, should we go up in discussion more formally?
I'll make that motion.
To support?
I'll support.
Okay, we have, we have a motion, we have a motion on the floor, let's open discussion on this proposed resolution calling for. Collaboration between jurisdictions. Councilmember McConnell?
Thank you, so I'm excited that city manager Seisler has been very active in collaborating with our neighbors, so thank you for your leadership. Can you just help me understand what, what will be in the MOU and how this will work? Somebody needs to mute there.
Okay, sounds like Mr. Drows had some activity in the background there. So I'll start with Councilmember McConnell, what you stated earlier, so yes, we've had some very good discussions, I, I did talk with some other city managers. And Jefferson East, Wayne County, Detroit Water and Sewer Department and Great Lakes Water Authority that we really needed to band together in regards to how we're going to address our, you know, regional infrastructure issues, so. We have now actually had two, I'm going to call it east side community discussions with Great Lakes Water Authority as the host. We've actually got a really nice round table or even, oh, I missed Southeast Macomb Sanitary District as well, up in St. Clair Shores, and so. The intent behind all these discussions right now is what is, and and Mr. Drows asked that, what is that level of service that we're looking for, what of our, what is our residents looking for? And the obvious in in relation to Gross Point Park is don't flood. And so along with improving our infrastructure, so each one of us communities right now are talking about what is it that we're going for? You know, I've discussed our CCTV program, our ERV pursuit, I know Gross Point Farms is looking at us. A separation project, Gross Point City is looking at the same. Gross Point Woods is looking at further cleaning their system and seeing if they can do something to Milk River. South Macomb is looking to improve upon their Capuchin Station, which had some issues, if you read most recently in the Detroit News. And then Great Lakes Water Authority is looking at what they can do in the case of those extreme events. To improve the communication that goes to not only the city managers, but as well as our pump station managers. And you know, what, what are those projects that maybe if there's an effort that we can collaborate and you know, share funding together, we can do so. A couple of those that we are looking into, the Gross Point Park just applied for what's called the Brick Grant or Building Resilient. And independent communities through FEMA, I know Gross Point Farms is looking at the same in Gross Point City. I've been talking with Jefferson East Incorporated, if there's a potential between the city of Detroit and Gross Point Park. To work together on a hazard mitigation assistance program between our neighboring communities. And so as part of Great Lakes Water Authority, you know, looking at their wastewater master plan and what do they need to update or what do they need to move that timeline a little faster? You know, they're putting down these projects that each of these cities are looking towards, because maybe at the federal level, you know, when we're talking infrastructure. You may have seen up, the number doesn't come to mind right now, but Great Lakes Water Authority just said, I'm, don't quote me on this, but I believe it was in excess of like fifty or a hundred billion dollars. Just to be able to fix, you know, our regional system and so. To get to the point, you know, as I'm rambling here, I think it's very important that each one of us look to. You know, write down and and address what we're doing to help our communities, how can that help other communities upstream, how can that can help communities downstream? And how can we leverage that to bring that attention to Lansing and Washington DC and so. And and Great Lakes Water Authority, and so that's really where this MOU and these discussions I think would further help empower. Not only Gross Point Park, but other neighboring communities and interest groups.
Okay. So the MOU would say what, I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
So the MOU, for example, could discuss in in regards to Gross Point Park that we are pursuing, which we just adopted tonight, the resolution for the ERV. We applied for the Building Resilience Communities Grant, working with the Hazard Mitigation and then addressing a couple of the initiatives that we're taking right now, such as the. Cleaning our sewer system, flow meters, and so it's really just a list of what is it we're doing and is there something that we can work together with the other neighboring communities to address?
Potentially going after funding, for example, is that what you're saying?
And here's a great example, Councilmember McConnell, so Gross Point Park has five major inner, I believe, yeah, it's five major interceptors that go through our city, so we have the Fox Creek enclosure, the DRI. The Mac Avenue Relief and I'm forgetting the two others, but. A lot of those go intersect through different communities and so, you know, some of those responsibilities may be from Wayne County, it could be for the city, it could be Great Lakes Water Authority and so. You know, you know, we're looking at as well, okay, this is what Gross Point Park's going to look at in, you know, the Fox Creek enclosure here. Gross Point Woods and Gross Point City are going to look in their sections as well, and so we're just getting understanding and making sure, you know, we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Reed?
Thank you, so I go back to the map that Patrick Joe showed us, I don't remember, a couple of meetings ago. And. Macomb and Oakland really stood out because of the number of communities that had combined systems. So I, I would really like and I, you know, I mean, a resolution in and of itself doesn't necessarily have any teeth, you know, it's what comes after that, if we have a. We enter into an agreement with similarly situated communities or with. I mean, we already have a contract with Great Lakes Water Authority, they're supposed to be taking care of us, but whether. You know, the, I would like to see us put some pressure on other communities separating or some other solutions that. Aren't sending the region's wastewater. Down this way, because we're, we're the next door neighbor to that and I think that at least. Based on the discussions that I've been having, including in these meetings, that, that's part of why we were so seriously impacted, so I, you know. I, I don't know if this resolution, if there's a place in this resolution for something along those lines, but. That's part of the discussion that I would like for us to be having as a city and to be having with. Our neighbors right here, which would include the other gross points, which would include Jefferson Chalmers, Jefferson East, because. You know, and and there are some other communities on the west side that were equally impacted, but. I, I'd like to see us pursuing that sort of. Assertiveness with Great Lakes Water Authority and some of these other communities that aren't separated, that are sending their wastewater. Their combined wastewater to Great Lakes Water Authority. Is there a way to add? At least a whereas paragraph? To cover that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I was just looking at the resolution.
Yeah, I, I would certainly support that, I think, you know, for those in the community that are, that are listening that don't have the benefit of looking at the draft of the resolution, there is. A list of potential actions that is included as part of it, so there's no reason not to include what council member Reed just outlined, because it certainly has merit to be talking to those jurisdictions that are impacting us.
So we could, we could amend the resolution, we could at least. Direct the administration to develop. An amendment that comes with, is what Councilmember Reed just stated, possibly include that as as part of the vote this evening, if you wish.
So we can add, maybe to help the discussion and maybe Councilmember Reed, correct me in this, but. In a way, what we're looking for is maybe an encouragement of those other communities to separate their systems.
Yeah, maybe something stronger than encouragement and I think the, the entity that has. Probably more sway there would be Great Lakes Water Authority, I mean. They have a, you know, they have the contract with each city, right? We can't tell them what to do, but by pressuring our partner, and we just signed a thirty-year contract with them that. We're expecting them to provide our, remove our wastewater from our city and and it didn't happen very well this past summer. So if we can seek. That, you know, we, we can't ask, I can't think of another city and I don't want to name names, but another city that's not separated. They'll say, well, that's your problem, it's not ours, but if we can ask Great Lakes Water Authority, pressure them. To work with their partner communities to, I'm going to try to do this now, to work with their partner communities to relieve. Pressure on the system by separating their storm and sanitary and that, so that would. That's probably the type of, there's a storm and sanitary system, so that's part of why I want to say, I think there's another solution beyond that with, what might be to decentralize. Even sending it down here in the first place, but that's. That's maybe part of a bigger discussion.
Yeah, it does, it does say already that the MOU would outline, outline. Expectations and duties of each jurisdiction, which the things described fall under that category.
Right, but we haven't named other.
Identified any of those.
Municipalities.
Yeah.
And they, they're the ones that have the systems, the. The school system does and DTE doesn't, so.
Mr. Mayor, I think the intent was just to capture the high level points and not get into the detail of each of the potential outcomes, so I think just capturing the main point and adding it to the list. That's already here would accomplish what we're hoping to accomplish, so that would be my recommendation.
Okay. If someone wants to make a specific amendment. Or as specific, as specific as you can get, subject to cleanup by the administration.
I thought I just did that, now I'm going to have to try to repeat myself.
Yes, let me ask this question.
I actually wrote it down, Councilmember Reed. I'll try to see, go ahead, Mayor Dinner.
This is recorded, the administration will easily be able to recapture it. So if you, if you want to treat that as a, as an amendment, if you, and and I'll ask for support for that amendment. And then we can add that to our voting sequence, sir, support?
Support.
Okay. So we have, we have one amendment on the floor, which we will get. Anything else in discussion of this resolution? Councilmember Flut?
Um, I just had one thing, which was that it was suggested that the, the MOU itself have measurable outcomes. And I was wondering what those specifically might be.
I'm going to guess those are going to be subject to negotiation, but.
Yeah, I, I, yes, I, right, it's a discussion we need to have with our jurisdictions, neighboring or partners, collaborative entities that would help us identify precisely what those are, but. I think in general, what we're trying to accomplish here is much what the city manager's already outlined, which is to leverage federal funding, to demand accountability from decision-making agencies in all levels of government, to improve the likelihood of elevating priority capital improvement projects with agencies like GLEWA. And through collaboration will bolster the likelihood, and I'm just reading from it now, of obtaining legislative tools, purchasing efficiencies, planning solutions, intellectual capital, shared systems. Coordinated communications and education, data gathering, forms of relief assistance, modeling, best practices, green infrastructure and overall economies of scale yet to be identified, so those are some of the outcomes. So those are some of the outcomes that, um, are provided for within the resolution as it exists today. And once we enter into discussions with those jurisdictions, I would imagine that this list would mature, uh, over time and become even more robust.
Okay, and I, I did read it, but I'm asking, do we have one or two things in mind that we would specifically be, um, maybe a couple of things that we feel we absolutely would want to seek from these other municipalities or jurisdictions? Um, this list could be huge, I understand that. But can you give me a couple of examples of things that we would specifically be seeking?
I think most importantly, um, city manager, if you want to take that, go ahead, but I would think funding is a big one, uh, as well as, um, well, that, that would be the primary one, would be funding and economies of scale efficiencies that we can achieve by working collaboratively. That will benefit our residents, because, you know, the stakes are high, and we need to show our residents that we're serious, and we're putting the full force of government behind, uh, this effort to resolve this serious infrastructure problem that we have. And that's what this resolution will accomplish, because it gives us the force of working collaboratively with other voices that become louder when we're together, and the economies of scale that, um, come, come from that kind of partnership.
Sure. And to add to, and Councilmember Fluid's question, a couple of those that I would immediately seek out. Um, uh, funding is number one, that's with grants. Number two, data gathering. In, in the past, we had always, you know, everyone held their infrastructure tight, never shared anything. And, you know, unfortunately, uh, you know, in some cases, we're, we're asked nicely, uh, some entities are still requesting FOIA's. And, you know, and I understand that's the proper process as well. But, you know, when we're looking for time is of the essence, you know, it, just that mutual collaboration, working together of, it's okay to share maps back and forth, and, you know, our engineering data. I know Mr. Droes has actually had a lot of discussions with, uh, AEW, who's another engineering firm, Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark and others, um, you know, to share about what their interests are of the system. Uh, I'll give you a great example in regards to data gathering. So we had a high-level discussion with the engineer of Detroit Water and Sewer Department, and we were looking at old plat maps, uh, essentially, and, uh, helping to correct of what, uh, he understood of our system that's DWSD designed back in the day. And, uh, you know, we provided some corrections that, you know, is something that probably should have been done, you know, 50, 60, 70 years ago. Uh, you know, another one of those, and I think it's probably one of the highest levels of what we're doing right now, is sewer cleaning. You know, highly encourage communities, uh, if they have not already, to do their coal circuit television sewer cleaning, um, which we'll further discuss later in this meeting. Um, you know, drying out our, the system. I know Gross Point City right now is, uh, going forth with the downspout disconnection ordinance, similar to Gross Point Park that we provided to them. And then, you know, uh, if we really wanted to get into a higher level, you know, as I mentioned too, you're seeing Gross Point Farms is looking at uh, sewer separation project and potentially Gross Point City. So those are a couple of examples, but I see the easiest low-hanging fruit is data gathering, funding, and sewer cleaning at this time.
We had a pretty good discussion. I'd like to call the question, so we can keep moving, the meeting moving along. Um, so we have an amendment on the floor as described by Councilmember, uh, Reed. Um, so I'd like to call the question on the amendment first.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Rappson?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Dennis?
Uh, yes, uh, motion passes amendment, uh, has been adopted. Um, now I'd like to call the question on the resolution as amended.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Rappson?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Dennis?
Uh, yes, motion passes, resolution's been adopted. Uh, thank you, Council, it was a good discussion, and thank you, Councilmember Hodges for, uh, putting these resolutions, uh, in, in front of us. Um, let's move on to, uh, OHM sewer update. We've touched on some of these topics, but I think there's a little bit more to talk about, and I'll turn it over to the administration for that.
All right, thank you. Uh, well, we have discussed a little bit, um, here, and then I'll, I'll go ahead and let Mr. Droes take it away. Uh, Patrick, go right ahead.
Thank you, Manager Seisland, and, uh, Council and Mayor Dennis. Um, as part of our, uh, monthly updates, we wanted to, uh, just provide a high-level overview of, uh, what activities have occurred over the last month relative to the sewer system. Um, so first and foremost, um, as of last, uh, meeting, we, uh, obviously, uh, were, um, able to provide a, uh, notice of award to Pipe Tech, uh, who is handling all of the city's sanitary sewer televising and cleaning work. And we began, uh, work shortly after the council meeting, um, by getting a, uh, pre-construction meeting set. And, uh, since that time, uh, Pipe Tech's been in the community daily. Um, generally, at least two to three crews, uh, have been working and predominantly in the southwest portion of the city. Um, and really, the way that this particular work is, is you want to start at the upstream portion and work downstream, because as you clean that, you just want to keep pushing that down. So they started at windmill point, it had been working towards Jefferson. Um, as of, uh, this afternoon, they have, uh, they have reached Jefferson on a few streets, actually. Um, basically between Pemberton and Lake Point, um, they have completed the run there. In total now, it's about three and a half percent of the system has been televised and or cleaned at this point. Um, as noted in a report, um, there has been, uh, a fair amount of debris that's been discovered within the pipes, um, which is, uh, to be expected. So that is, uh, generally being, um, either jetted out or, uh, vacked and, uh, taken to a, uh, landfill. Um, so that work continues daily. Um, they are also beginning manhole inspections, which is, um, basically, uh, opening those and then identifying any sort of, uh, cracks or defects within those. Man, manholes are a fairly significant source of, uh, inflow and infiltration. Um, so those inspections are actually pretty important, because a lot of times that interface at the surface is a spot where a lot of water can get into the system. So as those inspections are completed, each individual manhole is being tagged, uh, identified, and a condition assessment is given to each one of those, um, which eventually will be part of a, a later program that can be part of a capital program to provide that maintenance. Um, as this work has proceeded, um, there has been daily issuance of flyers to residents, um, letting them know that the work is coming. Um, so that information has been provided, uh, on doors. It's also available on the city's website, a, uh, sewer information page has been started under the, uh, DPW portion of the website. Included on that section is a, uh, weekly update of where we're at with the televising, and there's a, a map that we post every Friday afternoon, um, just so we can see what the additional work will look like for the next week. Uh, so if people are curious where work's happening, um, that can be found at that location. We've also included some information, uh, again, on the downspout disconnections, and there's a, a flyer, uh, a piece of information on the website as well for that, um, about what, uh, residents can do to disconnect their downspouts. Um, actually, members of OHM met with, uh, DPW this afternoon as well, um, to kick off a, uh, program to begin inspections, um, as requested by residents of homes across the city. Um, so if, if re- residents are unsure about, um, if a downspout's connected or, um, what they can do, um, they're advised that they can, uh, reach out to DPW. So information will be forthcoming, uh, via mailers or newsletters to let people know if they're curious about it, um, that they can work directly with the representative of the DPW, um, to have an inspection performed at their site to understand what options are available to them. Um, another update is, um, regarding our coordination with other agencies. As, um, Manager Seisland noted, we had a, a fairly, uh, uh, successful series of meetings with GLWA to, um, basically start, um, improved information sharing. And, uh, I think the, the, one of the things that GLWA will be, um, really, I think, calling into question for all the agencies is a, a pretty firm discussion of level of service, um, to so, to kind of understand what communities are, are looking for. Um, so at least we kind of know what that, um, what that level is. If, if it happens very across the system, or if certain communities have a higher level or lower level, um, just to know what that particular item is, uh, especially as we get towards the, uh, regional cooperation and, and finding those solutions. Understanding where each community's coming from will be important, um, and kind of that conversation, as well as the information sharing should help. Um, with that, um, understanding is, as those reasonable solutions are pushed forward. An update on model development, we're really focusing now, um, on the Jefferson and Three Mile, um, section of the model. Um, as noted by Manager Seisland, the city did submit, uh, for a, uh, what's called a brick grant um, for the EERV. Um, this would provide federal dollars to that program, uh, to design and construct that improvement. Obviously, uh, ultimately requiring Eagle permitting, but, um, the funding source, uh, if we can prove that is a cost to benefit by doing that, which we're fairly confident we can do, um, would make that a, a project that FEMA would fund um, because of risk avoidance that could be gained by funding that type of improvement. Uh, flow metering, we'll have an item later in, in the council as well, for the, um, flow metering contract. We did receive bids last week, uh, from two vendors, uh, both local from HESCO and, uh, ADS, which we can talk about a little bit later. And we mentioned also the communication plan section that the website has been updated, and we'll continue to post information there as it becomes available. And over the next, uh, month, we continue, uh, along with our televising work. Um, basically, I think we'll start to push a little bit further east in the community, um, south of Jefferson. Um, and then also focusing, uh, again, on the kind of northwest corner, uh, of the community. Um, in that particular side, we'll, we'll be starting from Mac and pushing south, uh, because Jefferson Avenue really is kind of the low point of the sewer system. With that, I think I can open it up to questions. Mr. Seisland and Mayor Dennis?
For Councilmember Kyle?
Thank you, thanks for the report, and, um, thanks for the continued progress. Um, my, my understanding is that normally these projects are in the works for a year or better. So, I know that you're doing an expedited schedule, so I appreciate that. Um, it says in the, um, report that, um, uh, you know, the, when you find cracks or tree roots, that those will be part of a future program. Um, so two questions on that. One, can you help residents understand why we wouldn't do that right now, uh, as you're going through? And then the second question is, in terms of the condition of the system, are you using a rating system to help prioritize repairs? And if so, what kind of system are you using?
Great, great question. Um, so, um, at the start of your, your comment, you mentioned the speed. And I think that is really the, the main reason why we are, um, just continuing to move forward. Um, this initial pass to hit every, uh, uh, basically, every portion of that 41 miles in the city is really to understand quickly what the conditions are. Um, the work that's going on out there is really, um, we clean as much as we need to, to get the cameras through, and we document that condition. Um, obviously, if there are issues that are, um, significant, like a failure or some sort of collapse, we, we will obviously deal with those as we come across. Thankfully, we've not run into any of those. There have been, um, definitely some, some larger blockages that we've were able to, to work around. And clear those as best we can. Um, but there will be, I, I think, in later years, more of a cleaning regime that would be, um, basically proposed, um, where every, call it five to seven years, um, you're going through and doing that cleaning. Uh, and part of that is really realizing where that's happening. Um, in the upstream areas, it may become more common. In those lower areas, there can be enough flushing where it may be not, may not be as much of a problem. And that's part of this portion of the data is really to find out where those bad areas are, and that sets up potentially a future program to, to really target those. Um, and then I think your next question was, um, regarding, basically, how do we, uh, categorize them? And, um, so I, I think if we, we may have talked in the past about, for roadway systems, uh, we call Pacer ratings, which is basically a, um, it's a, a, a rating that we use to basically characterize the, the condition of a roadway. Uh, goes from one to 10, with 10 being the best. We do the same thing for sewers and manholes. It's called, um, it, it coded as PACP and MACP, um, it's for pipes and manholes. We use that same rating system. It's actually a national standard that allows us to really characterize it. And then, uh, whether we're trying to, uh, do more structural improvements or deal with the inflow and infiltration, um, that can be a city decision. We, we'll be able to really extract that data, make those decisions at a citywide level to help basically define what the next, uh, several years of a capital improvement program might look like.
Yeah, and you beat me to my next question, that a lot of cities do this like every five years. So it sounds like it, once we get through all, everything, there'll be a recommendation that we do this, uh, I mean, on an ongoing basis, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I guess it's really more of a comment. Um, the one piece that I am very interested in, and we've talked about this before, is the communication plan. Um, I just had a conversation with a resident today who was sharing with me his experience with the, uh, storm drain near his house, his familiarity with it, even directing, uh, city employees, um, during a storm where, where, where they should be going. Um, and, uh, so the residents are really familiar with how, now, this is the storm and not the sewer, but they are familiar with how the system is working in their neighborhoods. So, um, as the sooner we can, um, add that communication piece, the better. I think it will help us understand some things as well.
Okay, absolutely.
Uh, Councilmember Fluid?
So this is the question I was gonna ask earlier, and it's more for the city than it is for Mr. Droes. But, um, you know, we did have, when this, when this started, um, and I was very happy to see that it started really quickly. This, this got underway very quickly after we approved, um, or we, we accepted their bid. Um, all the residents who were targeted for scoping and, and cleaning, um, apparently didn't get the flyers. And so we had some residents who didn't know what was happening. And, um, one very important piece of information on the flyer was telling residents how to keep their toilets from not overflowing, but, you know, water was bubbling up out of the toilets. And so a few residents did not actually receive that information. So I would ask again, that the city make sure that, um, I, 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 I don't think telling people to just check on the city website is enough, unfortunately, because I don't think people take it upon themselves to do that. I think if we could continue to make those posts on Facebook, email people, um, you know, maybe once a week, whatever it takes to, kind of, as we've done with street paving, get that information out there on a regular basis to let residents know that this is gonna be happening on their block, you know, this week, next week, at least give them some parameters so that they know when this is gonna be happening. Because unfortunately, a lot of people just don't pay, pay really close attention, and, and the flyers may miss them. So, you know, we talk about better communication all the time. I think, I think this is something we need to be really mindful of with, with this project. And I think they'll appreciate it. And I think people are, I think residents are, are supportive of this project. Everybody's concerned with infrastructure. So, you know, it's, it's good to keep them updated.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you for, uh, the report, excellent report, um, which is a good segue, uh, out of unfinished business. The first way of coming on unfinished business, Council, do you have any comments on unfinished business? Uh, see, uh, one, Councilmember Fluid?
Um, Councilmember Hodges mentioned something about a list of city properties, and, um, I wanted to come back to that discussion that was started with, uh, what in, in August, when we started talking about the Pitters property, and one thing we had touched on last month was that, um, I don't think any of us are really sure exactly how much property the city owns. There's apparently not a comprehensive list, or at least we don't have access to a comprehensive list of how, how much property is owned by the city. So when will we have a list to refer to, and when can we start having that discussion about perhaps getting rid of some of that property that the city is holding on to? Because inventory is low, again, right now, this is a great time to sell off some of that property and maybe liquidate, liquidate some of our assets. So when can we look forward to that discussion?
Or refer to the administration on that one?
Yeah, so the first comment I'll make is, um, uh, you know, we, we did have the discussions regarding the alter and, um, uh, the Pitters property, which, you know, we'll have those further discussions come to council. Um, you know, we have a list that, in, in, Clerk Blake Hood, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, uh, you know, we do have a, a list for the Tifa properties, uh, we have a list for city properties. And so, um, Councilmember Fluid, what if, what I'm gathering, you're suggesting is that we look into, uh, let's have, start the discussion of maybe the city properties, is there something, uh, you know, what I can go back and do is, uh, administration, take a look and see if there's city-owned properties that we should further look, um, yeah, as part of a. Yeah, it is part of a maybe a comprehensive list of whether or not, you know, we want to keep those or or look for to put them up for sale.
Yes, because that was part of our earlier discussion. Mayor Danner had had referenced that that maybe we should start looking at getting rid of some of those properties. So when can we start working on that?
Well, I can certainly get together with Clerk Bligh Hut and probably one of the things I'll do as part of my recommendation back then as well. Is, you know, we can take a couple of those properties and get a fair market value on those just so we can understand. And if. You know, after a further discussion, if council wants to move forward and direct me to do so. Then I could go and pursue the appraisal and work with an R F P to potentially, you know, look at. Potential sale of those properties. So if that's something you'd like for me to do and consider. I think time wise, that might be a little tough with, you know, we got about. Ten days or a little more at the November council meeting. So I would look at maybe that could be a consideration at the December council meeting. That would that would give us enough time to consider.
Yeah, and I I don't I don't think there's any rush. I just, it's one of those things that I don't want to get lost in the shuffle. Because again, we started this discussion in August. Let's let's start thinking about that and start looking at. Whether that's something we want to move forward on.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reed.
Just to add to that, I think a really simple thing that the city administration can do is just provide on the city website a list of city owned public properties. And that's transparency. And that sort of just puts the information out there for the residents and we don't have. Questions about what do we own, what don't we own, when do we own it? I would just advocate. Putting, I mean, if the if the city owns the properties, that means we all own them. They're they're owned by the residents, the taxpayers. So. I think that's a real simple thing that you can do. And that alone may generate some activity that would be beneficial for the city in terms of sale or development.
Okay, thank you. Any other council comment on unfinished business? Good, we'll close that out and that closes out unfinished business. Move on to new business. And similarly, council comment will be at the end of the section. We'll start with the sewer meter bid. Which was set up in part by the. The previous report. So I'll turn this over to the administration and no doubt, Mr. Drows.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. And so before council before you tonight, we did have a bid opening. That was conducted by O H M advisors in the city. I'll let Mr. Drows get into that a little further, but for your. As part of the recommendation tonight, if if council approves, that would go on, the purchase would be done under the Water and Sewer Fund. And so, Mr. Drows, if you want to go ahead and take it away and explain this further.
Yes, thank you, Manager Seislin. As noted a few minutes ago, one of the elements of putting together our sewer model is to have sewer metering in place. And what these effectively do is. Monitor continuously the elevation and velocity of the water within our sewer system. And we use that information as part of the calibration phase that ultimately. Will be required by Eagle as part of any permitting that we we do. It also gives us a. A much better level of understanding of how our system works. And it also helps us to even really kind of dig into some areas that maybe we can have some additional. Operating efficiencies within the system. So modeling is is a pretty common task as part of sewer evaluations. And we had noted it back in August when we kind of rolled out the overall project plan for that work. So as was noted, we did receive bids from two bidders. And these are both, again, local bidders, A D S, as well as Hamlet Engineering Sales Company, which is also known as HESCO. We're recommending that council move forward with providing that award to HESCO in the amount of eighty thousand seven hundred dollars. If there's any questions, I can take them now.
My understanding is that in the city manager's introduction, he said that the Water and Sewer Sewer Fund. Could handle the expense. And so that's where the funding would be from. I'd entertain a motion to accept the bid of HESCO for this work. There were several supports. We'll let quick playhead sort that one out. Any discussion before we call a question? Call the question, please call the role, please.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Badges.
Yes.
Rapsen.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Yes, motion passes. The bid can be awarded. The project can be awarded to HESCO. I'd like to thank the administration and our and Patrick and the engineering engineers for moving us along. Fairly quickly, consistent with, again, what you presented to us. Previously is the overall project plan here. I think we're making good progress and appreciate your efforts. That moves on to the next one, small cell application. And I'll add. Administration again to introduce this topic.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. And with me tonight, James Grenfloh from McKenna and Associates. To if he if James, you want to put your camera on or if not, you can do so. Council had at one other point, a small cell approval discussion. I believe that was earlier this year. From another applicant. And so James worked with Mr. Terry Brennan, our building official. For consideration from the applicant for A T and T. And so, James, are you with us right now?
I am.
Okay, James, if you want to take it away and we'll go from there.
Sure. Good evening. Council, city manager and mayor. I believe that we have a representative from Black and Beach on the call as well this evening. Kathy Farina, who is available to answer any questions if you should have any. I will let you know that I'm having a little bit of technical difficulty. So if my. If I disappear, I will try and come back as quickly as possible. We did receive an application that's pursuant to ordinance number two seventeen, the small cell wireless facilities. Within the city limits of Gross Point Park. Right now, the applicant has submitted for five locations, which they're proposing to co-locate equipment. On existing utility poles, which are actually light poles that are within the city limits. The poles that are existing are currently owned and maintained by D T E. And therefore, the A T and T equipment would be co-located on those D T E light poles. Both D T.
We lost him.
In the meantime, while we're there, we do have the applicant Kathy. If you would like to make any comments at this time, could you do so now?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Kathy Farina. I'm with Black and Beach. I represent A T and T in the application to obtain permit approval for the five small cell locations. So I, A T and T has identified a need along the area. That we identified along Windmill Point Drive, pardon me. And A T will be attaching a small cell equipment to existing D T E light poles. There are five locations, as mentioned. I know that Mr. Gornfloh has maybe calling in, but if not, I will try to pick up where he's come from.
No. Hey Kathy, I'm actually back here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
All right. So as Kathy pointed out, there's five locations which they've submitted an application for. Four of which are along Windmill Point Drive and one of which is on Lake Point Street. In each location. A T and T is proposing to mount a canister antenna, two radio units with their enclosure. Two diplexer units with its enclosure and one load center. I believe you should all have copies of the photo simulations that were submitted with the application. So you can actually see what those. That group of equipment looks mounted or looks like mounted on the light poles. The permit approval process has got nine steps to it, which commences with a pre-meeting. And then ultimately, once all the conditions are met with the application. Final approval is granted by city council and then the permit would be issued by the building department. Under section twenty three, one twenty five, there are twenty general criteria for. The location and use of small cell sites within the city. I've listed those out in my report.
We lost him. I'll continue because I'm looking at that page. The report does list the nine conditions and indicates that they are either satisfied or not applicable. So and my read of of this report, the application and the conclusions of our. Of administration is that based on our ordinance. That this application does meet the requirements of our ordinance is is my observation. And that as a result, we really have no no other recourse but to but to approve it. But on the on the positive side, I'd like to go back in history a little bit here. We, as a city, have been pestering our cell. Providers for a long time to improve cellular service. South of Jefferson, particularly along Windmill Point. It's a constant. A problem for our residents there. This is a step in the right direction. My view is that the small cell application that was that is shown here is not particularly intrusive. And is done done pretty tastefully, given the functionality they're trying to accomplish. And that all of our residents that are in that Windmill Point neighborhood, particularly. You know, in the southern portions of it are going that are going to appreciate this, particularly those eight that are A T and T customers. So that's. That's that's my summary of it. And then I'd entertain a a motion to approve the application.
Support.
Support. Any further discussion? Call the role, please.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Badges.
Yes.
Rapsen.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Yes, motion passes. So the permit can be can be issued. Next, we have the downspout appeals board appointments. As part of our recently updated downspout, downspout ordinance. It calls for an appeals board so that if the city. Requires a resident to take certain action on a downspout, they and they disagree with the city's requirement. They can appeal that to the to the to the board. Who will look at at the merits of the of the appeal. And rule accordingly. It calls for three regular members and one alternate. And one of those regular members is to be a resident. So with that, I'm going to move these appointments actually in one block. Well, first I'll do the internal ones as one block. And then I'll talk a little bit about the resident. The first. I'd like to point Pat Thomas from our Department of Public Works, our D P W supervisor to a two year term on the board. He knows more about our system than than anyone that I know. The alternate from the Department of Public Works would be for a three year term. That would be Tom Jenny, also D P W supervisor and second command there. And then our city engineering firm, O H M advisors and their staff would serve the third. Third position. So I would move those three appointments as sir support. I support. Call the role, please.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Badges.
Yes.
Rapsen.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Yes, those three appointments, internal appointments are confirmed. And then finally, the board calls for one resident. And I have an application from Keith Badges, who is a resident of Maryland. Longtime resident of our city, forty years of residence, obviously familiar with Ghost Point Park and and the. And and some of the challenges that we all have in managing our our stormwater and our downspouts. And while he is a very qualified candidate, from what I can tell, and he's been recommended also by by Pat Thomas. He was, in fact, the only applicant for this board. It's apparently a really sought after position. Fortunately, he's an applicant that I can support. And I would be happy to. Appoint Keith Badges to our downspout appeals board. Call the role, please.
Oh, can I just make one comment?
Yeah, certainly.
Yeah, I I know Keith, he's he'll be great at this. And I should also, we should also mention, he makes the kayak racks at Patterson Park.
Oh, I did not know that.
Yes. He mentioned it to me that I think he'll be he'll be great. He'll be very good on that board.
Okay, super. Call the role, please.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Badges.
Yes.
Rapsen.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Yes, Mr. Badges has been appointed to the downspout appeals board. And we have our, we have done our duty as a council and fulfilling the requirements of our recently adopted ordinance. Next item is the Michigan Library Appreciation Month Resolution. I was contacted by the Michigan Library Association. And asked if I would support a resolution of by council recognizing October as. The month to celebrate the contributions of Michigan libraries. This resolution is provided to us by the library association. We all know the library system is important to to the gross points. And we are fortunate to have. One of the three library branches of the gross point system right here in our in our city. So. I I would like to move that we adopt this this resolution as presented by the library association. Is there support?
For it.
Call the role, please. Oh, I'm sorry, we have a discussion. Yes, customer fluid.
I was just gonna say, this is the third community I've lived in as a parent and our libraries are remarkable. Libraries are inherently a good thing, I think, but. I've been just blown away in the time that we've lived here and in the gross points. I mean, all of the gross points have fantastic libraries, but. I just wanted to mention that because I think the programs that they do. And and the services they provide are are just incredible.
Councilmember Reed.
I agree with that. And I'll just say, when your last name is Reed, the library is your place. I love the library.
All right. Okay, customer Macau.
All right. So I guess I have to tell my late grandmother was a librarian. So I my father actually served on the library board. Or still does in Lansing. So and of course, English major. So I think it's fantastic. Thank you.
Great. Call the question, please.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Badges.
Yes.
Rapsen.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Yes, motion passes. Resolution has been adopted, recognizing October. For recognizing contributions of libraries. That moves us on to an agenda item that was requested by council member fluid. A poison ordinance discussion. So I'll ask council member foot to fill us in.
Thank you. So the reason I had asked for this to be on the agenda was just as a preliminary discussion, I had. Mentioned it first to councilmember Reed as the chair of the ordinance review committee and decided just to bring it to council first to see. What council's feelings were about this. But there have been several discussions amongst residents about. The rat issues that we're having, which have become more prevalent since the storm event in June. And also concerns that residents have around the use of poison and are. The ordinance that we currently have, if I can pull it up here. And our the ordinance that we currently have, if I can pull it up here, states it's section six four in our city code, which says, "No person shall throw or deposit any poisonous substance on any exposed public or private place." And so when residents first brought this to me, I referenced this, and I said, you know, we already have an ordinance against poison. But the concern, there was a little bit of back and forth, but what was being brought to me as a concern was specifically the use of bait boxes because although poison is not being spread theoretically in an exposed area, frequently, when rats or rodents get into bait boxes, they're still bringing some of the poison out with them. And if they don't bring the poison out with them, they're leaving the bait box, obviously, and they are dying out in in the open and then being consumed by other animals. So I don't know about you all, we have a hawk that lives very close to our house. So, you know, we have coyotes around, and we have several people who have told me that, you know, their dogs will get hold of squirrels or potentially dead rats if rats die on their property. I saw a rat dying once when I was walking my dog, and it was just right there on the sidewalk. My dog would absolutely grab a hold of an animal like that if he could. And so we've had several incidents where, you know, people's pets, people's dogs have gotten a hold of dead rats and then have died themselves because of the rat poison that was used to kill the rat. So the reason I wanted to bring forward this discussion was to see if we need to tweak the ordinance a little bit. We absolutely need rodent control. There's no question of that. But do we need to strengthen this ordinance to be more specific about how we can do it? Do we need to ban bait boxes as well as poison itself? Or do we need to only authorize the use of bait boxes in certain areas? Do we need to encourage people to use snap traps instead? And, you know, I'm not, I I'm not totally convinced of which direction we should go, which is why I wanted to bring it to council and have that discussion. So then we can decide if it's something that ordinance review should pursue.
Okay, thank you. I do recall that this sort of an issue has come up before since I joined council. Not when probably only Mayor Pro Tim Robson and I were on council last time this came up with with any serious discussion. Jimmy may remember it, but it had to do with the use, I believe, the use of bait boxes to control rodents, particularly behind our in the alleys behind our in our commercial districts. You know, where we had restaurants and that sort of thing. It was concluded that this was the most effective, it was the most effective and controlled approach. At that time, that was the conclusion for for that. Jimmy may have been able to offer some additional insights and other members of council.
Well, I I think the issue back then was, I think the, I could be wrong, but the the city was actually, as a public service, was planning these bait boxes in the in the northwest area, but perhaps other areas. Some citizens contended that their dogs got sick. And as a result, I believe, the city stopped using them. And that's where that stands, as I recall.
Okay. Councilmember Reed.
I guess the question would be for city administration. Does, I don't believe, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the city uses rat poison or bait boxes for rat abatement? Or do we?
We do not, no. The only thing that the city will do is if there's an identified area of rat holes, we'll cover it up with rocks for residents.
So there there was a robust discussion. There's actually a lot of resources on social media out there about rat patrol in various cities. Ferndale, they they addressed this, and they addressed it the way we did. They resolved as a city to not use the rat poison. And if they to not use rat poison, and if they needed it because of a serious infestation, there were certain parameters where they, you know, in order for them to do so. I'm happy to review it from ordinance review. I think enforcement would be very difficult because bait boxes, if they're being used, would not be visible likely. And then I think it would be difficult to trace if there's an an animal that you know, I'm happy to look at it, and I have looked at what some other cities have done. An earlier discussion we had tonight on alley cleanup, I'm hoping that that process may help with any identifying any rat colonies and addressing them. You know, they're a problem, and I think they became more of a problem with the pandemic. So I'm happy to review it and see what other cities are doing. It's always worth a discussion. I mean, the group here locally was, you know, very vocal about it, and and certainly, we don't want any pets, you know, to be affected by it.
Councilmember McCall.
Thanks. Yeah, I I would love to have this look that in ordinance review. But I also wanted to mention that I did look at some, it sounds like many cities actually unfortunately are dealing with a rat problem due to the pandemic, due to construction, due to climate, whatever the issue. So I did research a few options and shared those with the city manager. So I'm hopeful that we can delve into those. They range from birth control to reconfiguring. One city in New York reconfigured their trash cans to be more like a mail slot to make it harder because, of course, it's really food and water, right, that keeps them active, and they can repopulate in a very short timeframe. So any kind of things that will impact that would be helpful. But I definitely would love to look into it because I certainly don't want remedies to impact, you know, individual pets and animals.
Well, the it it seems like the the objective of this discussion would be to refer to ordinance review. And and I see that, you know, at least half the members of council present seem to be in favor of doing that. So I would suggest then that we direct that we do direct the ordinance review committee to to look into this. I know the ordinance review has a long list, but I think that council would like to have you add this to the list. Anything further on this?
I'm no, I I appreciate that, and I'm, you know, if I'm the one who brought it forward, I would be happy to, I'm not on ordinance review, but I would be happy to help with that research and take some of that burden off of them when it becomes time to to get started on that project.
Who knows? You may be on ordinance review by the time it starts.
You just never know.
Okay. Moving on to the next one is also a topic that for discussion the council member Fluid raised, and that's local emergency planning discussion. And Councilmember Fluid, would you like to introduce that?
Yes, thank you. Again, this is a little bit of a of a preliminary discussion, although I would like to perhaps end it with a with a resolution. So at our last in-person meeting, which was last March, I believe that was the first time I mentioned that I'd like to see the city be a little more aggressive in terms of putting together our own emergency plan. I'm aware, hopefully, most of our residents are aware that we do fall under Wayne County for leadership on most major emergency planning. And obviously, in August, we just had that discussion about the hazard mitigation plan, and we had a lot of good discussion at that time. However, I had mentioned then, and I've mentioned a couple of times, some of the items that were specifically mentioned in that hazard mitigation plan were things that we had talked about and that residents have also brought forward again since the June storm event. Because I believe in preparedness, and I believe in people knowing what the plan is ahead of time and and before we actually get to that point where we need to utilize that plan. So, for instance, some of the things that were in the hazard mitigation plan and that we talked about before were increased communication, which I know is something that Chief Gerald is is already working on. And he spoke to that actually earlier tonight. But I think getting that information out to our residents so that they understand what the communication plan would be would, in fact, also be part of of a local emergency plan. Designating where warming and cooling centers would be, making a list of resident volunteers who could help in different types of emergencies, and then continuing to gather that list of residents who might need assistance in the event of an emergency, which, again, is something that Chief Gerald has started, but I'm not sure that residents are really aware that that's being done. We have a couple of residents who have offered to lend their expertise with this plan, if that's something that would help. I could do that as well. And so what I'd like to see if we could do tonight is direct our city administration and public safety department to go ahead and put together a local plan that's specific just to the park. It could speak to ways we work with our other, the other Gross Points. It could speak to the ways we work with Wayne County. But I personally would feel better if we had some of these details already laid out and in place for how we ourselves as a city would handle a a major event. How would we communicate if the internet is down? Those are things I would like. Those are details I would like for us to have in place. And so I would I would move that we ask city administration to start working on this type of plan. At a minimum, you know, send it to our public safety committee if we need to do that and have them start this discussion. But I would like to see this start to move forward.
Okay. The, I believe, I didn't go back and verify this, but I believe the, you know, the outline of the emergency plan, you are correct, we're under Wayne County. I believe that there has responsibility, which we have delegated to the administration with our with traditionally the director of public safety taking the lead for our as an emergency manager. So I just wanted to clarify my understanding of that and then continue with the discussion. I suspect that Director Gerald may have something to offer, but I see Councilmember Reed have your hands up, has your hand up?
Yes, it's never, it's never a bad idea to plan for an emergency. So I would support that. I mean, one, one thing that I experienced during the summer storm events in my interactions with residents were a lot of questions and concerns and not having information or resources. So the more that we have centralized resource locally, Wayne County is a big county, that plan's very comprehensive, almost overwhelming if you are in the middle of what we all experienced this summer and just want to get to some basic resources. So I would, you know, I mean, I think a plan, any any type of plans always going to be a work in progress because things are going to change, you're going to update information, but providing that as a resource to residents is never a bad idea.
Anybody else? Councilmember McCall.
Well, I think it would be helpful for us to just hear from the chief or the city manager in terms of what has been done already. And that can guide us on the resolution. But I I certainly agree that things were, you know, a little rocky in terms of getting information to residents. And I think we all agree that we want to improve that going forward, but I just want to get a sense of what's been done or where we are in the process.
Okay, well, administration, I guess, I think the ball's in your court.
I'll start first, and then I'll let Chief Gerald take the lead after that. So I appreciate everyone on council, their comments are all correct. We do follow the Wayne County plan as well. You did see the latest plan that we adopted at city council that had further discussion of that. Since the storm events, we've had some internal discussions of how we can improve communication. You know, a department heads taking personal responsibility in regards to their department for issuing our communication further. You know, great example, you know, Clerk Blay did that such with the election. We have the, you know, DPW department has been doing, taking more upon themselves in regards to storm events or predictions of increased wet weather events. Public safety has done the same with NICSIL alerts as well as those water main breaks. Those are areas that we, you know, further addressed. And actually, as going back to my other comment before, it's not just us. It's it's even our regional entities, Great Lakes Water Authority. One of the big things that we identified is we had a, in one of the September rain events, there was, the managers were not communicated to by Great Lakes Water Authority that there were some electrical problems at the food station, and only our certain pump managers were being informed. And so we are having that discussion outside of this realm with Great Lakes Water of having a more regional communication plan so that we're all on the same page and just updating our communication. And so taken away from here, I'll let I'll let Chief Gerald discuss further about IPaaS and some of the initiatives that the police advisory committee is looking into. And obviously, hearing, you know, further council discussion, I'll be happy to work with council and public safety director to do so.
Uh, thank you, Nick. So at the police advisory committee, we did talk about communication and getting information out and also establishing the app, people who are at risk, establishing that list, and we're trying to get that out. The the big problem is it's the same people who have a problem getting the information during an emergency. They have a hard time getting the information now when it's all nice and calm. So, for example, Al Mazur, who sits on the advisory committee, works and manages, I believe, the condominium complex next door to City Hall. He was saying that they have a lot of people who are elderly who don't have internet. They don't, they don't really even own computers. They certainly don't own a smartphone. So he's working with them to try to get them to come in and sign up for the Smart 911, which has all the information in it. So in the case of an emergency or something, we can pull this information up on the Smart 911 terminals and then get help to people who may need it. So that's one thing we're looking at. I agree that it's always part of any emergency action plan is you have a list of resources that you could draw from. So, you know, using the storm event as a good example, one of the things that you would look at is resources like garbage trucks or dump trucks to pick up trash and things like that. This this event was so widespread that we weren't able to get anything until very late in the process, and that's why it took so long to clean up our city. And we, actually, Nick and DPW had to go to Ohio to get certain vehicles up here to clean everything up. So I agree, we need to have, you know, we'll take another look at the emergency action plan for Ghost Point Park specifically. And I have absolutely no, I think that's a good idea, that to update it and make sure that we have things like warming centers or a place to house people where the Red Cross can come in, and we can tell them, you can use, you know, whether it's the closed-down school or wherever it may be, but it needs to be an area where everybody agrees. So that would be the school system would have to agree, and then we would just tell the Red Cross, yep, you can set up your your base camp there. So I I'll absolutely take a look at the something and something specific for us.
Okay, so it sounds sounds like the administration will look at doing an update and an expansion of the plan that's in place, which makes sense.
Is that, is that something that you want to go ahead and work on on your own, or you want to do in conjunction with public safety committee?
We can come up with some ideas, and we can certainly submit them to this public safety committee for their review and input. If that would be acceptable.
Okay. I think that makes sense. We do, Council, Mayor Pro Tim Robson.
Well, I just want to throw in a lot of good discussion tonight, a lot of brainstorming. The only thing I would add, and yes, maybe this is something for the public safety committee, but I think maybe what many are looking for is what to do in case of some type of disaster. Is there an A, B, C, D, one, two, three, and four? If there's an airplane crash, if there's a flood. So if there's some type of plan or policy, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Fluid, that's something you're looking for or seeking.
Yes, and and not just for residents, but for us as well, you know, if Yes, um and and not just for residents, but for us as well, you know, if um if there is some kind of a disaster. Um you know, who who is our point of contact if city council members are wondering. Um how we can assist and and where we can respond and that that changes depending on the severity of the situation. So, um you know, there were, there was four points that I mentioned when I started the discussion. Um I don't think we need a a three hundred and fifty page document like Wayne County put together, but I I think there are. Levels of emergency that that would be handled in different ways.
And and I don't think we had to reinvent any type of wheel. Uh there might be other communities that have one that we can, you know, take a look at. Just an idea.
I was gonna say, in terms of process, I do like the idea of uh uh the administration uh taking a look, looking at an update. Uh bring, bringing uh for review, you to take advantage of our public safety committee of council. Um may um, you may also uh take advantage of our the um public safety advisory committee. Uh for resident feedback on it as well. So I think we've got some structures in place now that would help us uh. Uh vet it uh and uh and provide an update, and it sounds like the administration's willing to start pursuing that. Uh Director Gerald.
So to um Mr. Robson's point, when you have a a a disaster, so. Plane crash, a tornado takes a swath through the middle of town, those are events that. Uh here's one of the, I guess, the only disadvantage that I can think of for public safety. Is public safety, only about five to seven percent of what we do is fire related and the vast majority of that is medical runs. In the, in the world of true fire departments, when that's all they do, they can train uh routinely, they are. Masters, and I mean masters, at the National Incident Management System and the Incident Command System. They they live and breathe it almost every day. So when you're talking about these kinds of major disasters. They come together and they know how to manage those scenes. This is something that I'm, I am looking at. And that is furthering our fireside training in in as far as incident command and. Um and training up our people to be more involved and more knowledgeable in these areas. Cause I I agree, these are some of the things that we have to plan for. Um but again, in a major disaster like that, we're gonna. Bring together a uh a a command center. Um an emergency operations center and it's gonna be staffed and then we're gonna, you know, attack that problem. That type of a an arrangement probably would not have worked well during the storm system or the storm event mainly because. Everything that we were doing was really, or all the problems that we were having rather were actually predicated on. Somebody else's failures and not ours, and there was really nothing we could do about it.
Thank you. I think it's a good discussion. I think that uh some work's gonna get done and it's gonna find its way back from the administration. Uh to us, uh using some of the mechanisms we've already got in place.
But would you like me to make a motion on this or should we, is that necessary, can we?
I don't know that we need a motion, but um if it makes you feel better, I I mean, what sense of council? Do you, do you, do we need a motion or we just uh let uh Chief Gerald continue down the path a little bit here and get back to us as a council? Mayor Pro Tim?
If if uh there's no objection, uh I think maybe the administration, the chief should probably digest what the council has been. Expressing and then maybe at at the next council meeting or two, they could resume the discussion. Would that be all right with council member fluid?
Um it would. I've I've mentioned a few of these items in the past and um. I think today was obviously a much more comprehensive discussion, so if. Um as long as we are making progress, I will be satisfied with that.
Okay, I'll provide an update in my uh my next um public safety report at the next council meeting.
It might.
Thank, thank you.
Recognize that it might actually turn out to be December because the November meeting, this is where we moved from uh fourth Monday to uh second Monday. Uh scheduled, and so there's a very short time period between now and then. Just to point out, you, that may in fact, as practical matter be December, not November.
Fully noted.
Okay, um alright, I think that that closes that. Now we can open up to uh. Uh council comment for uh our new business. Council member Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. I just have a couple of uh comments. Uh first of all, I would like to thank um Chad Craig and Chris Delmage. And the Parks and Recs team for another successful Halloween in the park. Um the decorations were outstanding, everything ran smoothly, the weather cooperated. Um it's always one of my favorite community events and um it's obvious from the the faces of the kids, parents and grandparents. And community members that um that they enjoyed it as well, so thank you to uh. To the Parks and Recs team. Um and uh. Just a couple of personal comments for um you, Mayor Denner, and you, uh Mayor Pro Tom Robson. Um I did have the opportunity to celebrate both of you at the foundation party. And I think we'll probably have some opportunities to celebrate you and your service um in the months ahead. Um I just want to express my gratitude to you and to your families. Um uh those of us um here on screen know. The sacrifice that our families make for um uh public service, so. I want to extend my gratitude to them and especially to Nancy and to Kathy. Um and then just uh Bob, um you know, over the last four years, we've had many conversations. I'm. Very grateful for your perspective and your willingness to problem solve. Um we spent some time attending school board meetings together. And I think we both agree that that may be a tougher place than the council chamber. Um so I wish you and your family all the best. I'm happy that Canada is letting you back in. Uh so you can enjoy ti- time at your car, at your cottage. Um you've worked hard for our city and I wish you all the best. And Jim, um I've known you and your family on and off council for many years. I thank you for your service to our city. Um we serve together on public safety and ordinance review committees. I've always appreciated your thoughtful input and your commitment to maintain the highest standards for our community. Um I'm sure Kathy has great plans for you now, that you'll have extra time on your hands. Um I know you won't be a stranger and that you will continue to champion our city and its residents. Um so I look forward to um our next encounter, which uh will probably be a social encounter around town and. Godspeed to you both. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Um I'm gonna comment on Mayor Pro Tim Robson while we're, while we're on that topic. Um and I could, I could, I could go on. I had, I got a lot of notes from when I commented on his uh service at the foundation party. But I'll just hit a, hit a few highlights. Um to me, it's very impressive that uh. That Jim has contributed so much of his time over many years to to our city. Uh he's got thirty-four years of service to the park over a span of thirty-six years. That's, that's an amazing record of service. And it takes a lot of time and effort to do that, and it ranges from uh you know, time on on various uh commissions. He was on the planning commission. Uh before council or in between council sessions perhaps. Um Tifa, um you've seen a lot of things happen in our city. Um during that timeframe from uh a city that was uh, that was struggling in many respects to one that is now very, very successful. And he had a big role to play in that over a long period of time, and uh I've always been impressed by that. And uh. I also want to say that uh Jim, you've been an important advisor to me in my time on council. Uh starting from my very first day when you gave me orientation on what was important. Uh including uh to make sure I I remembered that the northwest sector was uh critical to the success of the city, which I already knew, but. So you certainly put an exclamation point on it, uh and you've always been a champion of of your neighborhood, and I know that uh that they appreciate that. Um and it's easy to lose sight of the fact that professionally, uh you're highly regarded law enforcement professional with uh. You know, a a terrific record of of service uh with Wayne County sheriffs and the airport police retiring as commander, so. Um you brought that in your leadership to the public save committee and safety committee as well as lots of things that happened on council. Um you've seen a lot of things on your watch, uh you know, that uh moved the city forward. And I really want to thank you uh uh for your service and wish you and Kathy all the best.
No, thank you, Bob, very much. Appreciate it.
Councilor McConnell.
I just real briefly on that topic, I too uh shared both with both of you directly at the foundation event. Um my thanks for your service and I'll just share one anecdote that, you know, before, long before I got on council, of course. My council person in this end of the city is council member, is Councilman Robson, so. The two times that I interacted with him for help on issues, he had my back, so thank you, Councilmember Robson. And uh go blue, Mayor Dinner.
Thank you. I'll second that.
I guess I should chime in too, which obviously our last meeting, my pops, but uh. It's been said the public service is the highest calling and I would agree with that. It has been my honor uh to serve our citizens for seven terms and twenty-eight years. It's been an equal honor uh to serve with, I'm looking at the stats here. Uh three mayors, three city managers, twenty-three council members, and of course hundreds of city employees and volunteers. And uh approximately uh are taking a three hundred and fifty meetings and it's been but. Uh it 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 just can't describe what an honor it's been to, to work with so many uh. As that city volunteers, the park foundation, the mayors, my current colleagues, it's just, it's just been a high honor. Indeed, when I first got elected a million years ago, uh this city was not in a good shape and that's one of the reasons why I I ran. And uh now I think uh we can agree it's a very vibrant city with a great future. We've had a little kick in the. Gut with this uh flood stuff, but uh you know, we will, we will prevail. I'd be remiss if I didn't say how grateful we all are to the. Our city employees and the hundreds that I have worked with. I reflect on our current city manager and and uh. What a fabulous uh administration. We really do have, starting with Nick. Uh Clerk Jane Blahut, Chief Gerald, Director Thomas and and Director Craig, just to to name a few. And uh I wouldn't trade that group for anybody. I think we got the best, we got the best lineup going. Uh and then uh shout out to Bob Denner, Mayor Bob Denner. Uh thank you, Bob, for your leadership, uh your care and your concern. Only. Uh those that have worked closely with you, Bob, like I have and others, really know what kind of great. Mayor you are, and there's no other way of saying it. Bob Denner's the type of guy. This is a supposedly a part-time position. He has made himself uh fortunately a full-time mayor. Uh he, he looks under the hood, he, that's his nature, he kicks the tires. And he has always tried to be extremely fair in everything he does, uh and a man of the highest integrity. So Bob, it has been a high honor to to work with you for eighteen years, the last five as mayor, and all my current council colleagues. I want to wish you all very, very well. And a lot of council members say this when they leave them, they'll say, I'll be back and we never ever see them. I'm gonna be back at the uh November, whatever it is, eighth or ninth meeting. So I can sit in the audience and and congratulate everybody. The meeting's after that, so I get to sit in the audience and uh. Have a bag of peanuts, start throwing it at you guys. I'll be the critic, whatever, I'm just kidding, of course. So thank you, everybody. Uh I go on parole on November second and uh I'm looking forward to it and God bless you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jim. Uh Councilor Flood.
Um so as not to be repetitive, I will just say, um. You both have to be recognized for your many years of service and volunteerism, and I wish you both well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Councilor Hodges.
I will very much look forward to a real opportunity in the future to fet you both appropriately, but I will summon for now. Uh our former colleague, council colleague Dan Clark, who usually fets us with an Aristotle quote. Uh I will, however, settle for Winston Churchill, who once said that you make a living by what you get. And a life by what you give. Um you both must have very beautiful lives because you've given so much. And Gross Point Park is far better for you and it's been an honor working with you and I look forward to counting on your wisdom and guidance going forward. So thank you for all you do and congratulations to your families for having you back.
I guess this is probably where I get to uh say my last few words as mayor, since it is uh, it is my last meeting. And uh I have a captive audience and so I'm going to uh, I I do have a few words. It's really amazing to me when I look back that it's been uh eighteen years and nine mu- nine months since Paul Marheenan. Uh walked into a conference room that I was working in as a representative from the Gross Point Park Foundation on what became the Laban Center. And he said, Bob, I've got an idea for you. Um I I'd like to appoint you to uh the council. We had a, we have a vacancy. We had a our councilman unfortunately uh pass away. And uh I said, Palmer, what's involved in that? He said, oh, not too much, don't worry about it. You know, I think you'd be really good at it and you'll like it. Well, that was eighteen years and nine months ago. Uh I I spent twelve years and nine months on council and then the last six years as as mayor. And overall, overall, it's been an incredibly rewarding experience to uh to serve the community that. Uh is my community. We, I moved here in nineteen eighty-two, but it's a community my wife Nancy grew up in. Uh it's the, it's the community we raised our family and now our our two sons are raising their families here in Gross Point Park, so. Gross Point Park is incredibly important to our our family and uh it's been an honor really to to serve. Um I have to say, looking back, I only go back, uh I go back. Uh residency about the same amount of time it's been since uh Jim joined uh. Who started his public service, but the parks come an incredibly long way in that time. Um you know, we had lots of, lots of tough issues back in the eighties. And uh by the time I joined council, a lot of the ingredients for future success have been put in place by those that came before me. And I really want to thank them for their leadership and moving us in the right direction. Um you know, the the DDA, the Tifa, the uh uh creation of the Park Foundation. All of those were key mechanisms that were put in place before me um that brought revenue to into our city. Uh that was to allow for projects that just would not have been possible with normal tax revenues. Um it was very strategic, uh great vision on the part of the leadership that came before me. Um and Paul Marheenan uh as mayor for many, many years and manager Dale Craniac who helped uh to implement. Implement many of those uh visions. Um so my focus on council has been to keep trying to move the ball forward and I hope that I've uh helped to do that. Um we've got, I I I get asked sometimes, you know, what's the most important thing that you think you accomplished uh during your time in. Public service and there really isn't any one thing. It's really the results. I mean, what we're in this for is to make sure our community. Is the best that we can possibly make it. That's I think why everybody who's uh on council now and all on council before, that's why we do it. Uh we love our community, we want it to make, make it the best that it, that it can be. And I'm very proud of where we're at now. I know there's always more to do, but I'm really proud of my city. Um we continue in recent years to be rated as one of the very best places anywhere to live. And after all, that's our, that's our objective is to to make this a great place for our, for our residents. Uh we've got a, I think, a vibrant, diverse, successful community. With great amenities, a great business district, lots of reasons why it's terrific. Um and of course, there's always more to do and we talked an awful lot about it tonight as it relates to the infrastructure of our city. Um and I am very confident that this group and uh future councils and adminis- and as the administration goes forward. Will be successful in tackling this tough problem as well and will continue uh to make uh, make progress. Um during my time on council, it's been a great pleasure to meet lots of people I would not have otherwise met. Um lots of terrific residents. Um you know, I met a lot of residents through uh chasing my kids around. Through youth sports and their school activities, uh but when I became on council and then later as mayor, I had a a reason and an opportunity to meet. Many, many more of our residents and we really do have a tre- terrific community and it keeps evolving and getting better all the time, I think. We also had a chance to work with a lot of very dedicated people, the elected officials as well as our our administration. Um I've always been impressed by just how dedicated the whole team is. And pulling forward and trying to find a way to pull in the same direction, and I I am confident we're gonna do that, working together. Uh in the future and the city will continue to uh uh relentlessly move forward, so. Thank you for uh, to our residents for putting their trust in me to be part of this for many, many years and uh. I look forward to uh retiring again. So, thank you very much. I think that closes uh council comment on new business and moves us on to public comment, non-agenda items. Um and I'll turn it over to the administration. My last shot. It was my last shot.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor Danner, members of council and the public. So I do have a couple written public comments that I'll read off first tonight. This comment comes from Sandra and Ken Walters in Gross Point Park. Noise abatement ordinance for lawn service contractors, not homeowners. Harmful decibels and noxious fumes from contractor gasoline blowers and commercial mowers. Six days a week force homeowners inside to shut the windows to escape the fumes and the noise. This severely affects the quality of life in GPP. Can an ordinance be devised to require commercial contractors to muffle the noise and reduce the emissions? Number two, the mayor indicated that the current pumping system worked as designed. What is it designed to handle? It must have been upgraded since nineteen thirty-eight to handle different rain events from that period. Do we need an upgrade now? Including the Great Lakes Water Authority plant failure on June twenty-six, twenty-one. We have experienced flooding four times since nineteen ninety-six, ninety-six, two thousand and sixteen, June twenty-twenty-one and July twenty-twenty-one. The last flood occurred three weeks after the June twenty-six flood and was totally unexpected. Did the pumps work as designed then? Will the current storm and sewer pumping capacity systems be upgraded to accommodate the changing weather patterns? Example, fifty to a hundred year events are becoming five-year events. Now, this comment comes from Mr. John Stevens at Gross Point Park. A comment was made at the March council meeting regarding a new business opening in the park. Someone posted to the Facebook page, GPP City Advocates about the new bookstore opening. However, the post was immediately deleted because this bookstore is owned by the Cotton family. The administrator of this page is Mary Rollo and admitted to deleting the post. There's an incredible conflict of interest. Ms. Rollo has been put forward by councilmembers Flut and Rayland for planning as well as Tifa. This is not her first time acting antagonistically towards the Cotton family, who is probably one of the largest business owners and definitely one of our most generous benefactors. According to noted journalist Lou Muleczko, Mary Rollo was quoted on record at the December twenty-one, twenty-twenty council meeting. Stating the Cotton family is one of the wealthiest campaign contributors to the Republican Party candidate statewide nationally. While absurd and divisive as this comment's intent clearly is, is absolutely is no place in our nonpartisan local government. Mary Rollo in January publicly doxed the Cotton families, giving amounts to the Republican Party on Facebook. There was no outcry from this council as they continue to support her all the while, witnessing the same behavior as the rest of us do. Councilmembers Flut and Rayland need to condemn Mary Rollo's despicable behavior and retract their support for appointment to any GPP committees. This comment comes from Carolyn Tomstein in Gross Point Park. We looked at, we looked at the candidate campaign reports on the Michigan Bureau of Elections page. I'd heard rumors regarding Darcy McConnell's donations and expenditures exceeding a whopping forty thousand. Far exceeding the previous candidate's spend of five thousand, twenty nineteen, nearly ten times over. Ms. McConnell submitted forty-six thousand dollars in donations and forty thousand in expenditures for an unpaid council seat. Let that sink in and please note these numbers are only up to October seventeenth and will certainly go higher in post-election reporting. She owns a communications company yet paid an outside company thirty-eight hundred for media consulting. Was it not something she could handle personally? One thousand dollars to act blue to simply process online donations? Nineteen hundred for a paid campaign manager, thirteen hundred for general consulting, forty-three hundred for TV advertising, twenty-one hundred for legal fees, compliance, admin fees. And lastly, best of all, four hundred twenty-nine dollars for the robocalls everyone loves to receive. Her history of hiring outside sources for what she should be capable of doing herself or delegating to volunteers means she will not spend taxpayer dollars carefully and frugally. Gross Point Park cannot afford Ms. McConnell. The breadth of exorbitant spending such as this has never been seen in our local elections. This comment comes from Ms. Ann Kraft in Gross Point Park. There have been reports in the community that Greg Theokas company loaned sixty thousand dollars to former city manager Dale Kraniek in twenty-fourteen. Back then, Theokas was a council member. Kraniek was the city manager. And the city did not have any ethics rules. It is now twenty-twenty-one. And the city finally has an ethics ordinance, but the ordinance is weak and still does not prohibit an elected Gross Point Park official from loaning massive amounts of money to a city employee. Same employee, the elected official is charged with overseeing. How can a council member independently assess the job performance of the city manager if the city manager secretly owes him tens of thousands of dollars? I have attached a copy of Theokas Kraniek loan documents to this email. As you can see, the signing of the loan document by Kraniek is witnessed by two city employees. The discharge of the loan in twenty-seventeen was witnessed by three city employees. City staff knew and now that council has the actual loan, council can no longer pretend this loan never happened. It's great that some members of council pushed for the adoption of ethics rules, but it's folly to ignore the giant holes in the ordinance. It's time for council to strengthen our ethics ordinance if council elects to quote-unquote move on, as one councilor recently put it. Without trying to prevent a repeat of the glaring mistakes of the past, those who ignore the past are doomed to repeat it. This last comment comes from Kelly Bowle in Nottingham. According to the National League of Cities, over three quarters of all municipalities have nonpartisan elections. The park is one of those municipalities. Proponents of nonpartisan ballots suggest political parties are relevant to providing services. At the municipal level, level, we hold nonpartisan elections because local issues center on providing basic services of water, sanitation, police protection and public works to the community. Many of the national issues do not come into play at the local level. Do park residents realize these four candidates, Greer, Kohler, McConnell and Reed have each accepted between seven hundred fifty and a thousand from the Gross Point Democratic Club, that sure gives it appearance of partisanship? If elected, will Greer, Kohler, McConnell and Reed be more loyal to their party over what is good for the park community? McConnell's forty thousand plus in funds spent on hiring outside sources sure indicates she won't be frugal taxpayer money. Let's vote for the best qualified people, put city before party, who will avert raincore and extremism and who will seek to unite park residents and businesses. These folks are Weiner, Gallagher, Caulfield and Hodges. Mayor Danner, those are my written public comments. And now I'm going to change over to spoken public comments, but Councilman McConnell.
I'll just be brief. I've been very transparent about my finances. So anybody can go and look and see what money, what donations I've accepted. I've also been transparent about the expenses. I think it's really unfortunate that the political spillover is now seeping into our meetings. When we just had a deep discussion about the number one issue facing our city and that's our infrastructure. So I, I think it's unfortunate. I also think that this has been insanely divisive. And I really hope that people take a step back and think about how we're going to come together when this is over. We are one city and we're going to have to work together. Whoever is governing is going to have to govern all the people. So I just wanted to express my dismay, but also say that I have nothing to hide. I've shared it on social media and talked in detail about why I raised the money that I did and, and have campaigned. But I think we should focus particularly as a government entity on the issues that residents are being impacted by. The number one is our infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McConnell. I, I'm going to remind council that this is for us to just listen to a public comment. I know you felt like you needed to have a rebuttal there, but I think to the extent that we start to engage in that, we may add to the political tenor here, which I know we're not trying to do. So with that, we'll, we'll, we'll go into oral comment. Oh, I can't hear you. City manager, you're muted. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Let me go ahead and share my screen for one second. Okay, I'm going to start with Mr. Ron Porter. If you could please state your name and city of residence and please go ahead, sir.
Yes, Ron Porter, still on Pemberton in Gross Point Park. And you know, I was not going to say a thing because Darcy McConnell can defend herself against those sorts of scurrilous attacks. Until Mayor Danner chose to jump in and scold her for defending herself against what really are ridiculous attempts to discredit her. And you know, yes, she has spent more money than most people have admitted to in the council race. And it's because of the cronies of Danner, Hodges. People like John Cotton, turning over the Gross Point News to run campaign ads as editorials, as news stories in support of certain candidates like candidate Hodges, like candidate Weiner, like candidate Christine. And I see you laughing, Bob Danner. Yourself at orchestrating this kind of thing. So.
Hi, Mr. Porter. It looks like he's no longer with us. Next public comment, I'm going to go to Anna's iPhone. Anna, if you could please unmute yourself, state your name and please go ahead for us.
Hello, Anna Signarino, still on Wood Ear, still in Gross Point Park. I think it's fantastic that we have a brand new ordinance regarding the downspout, you know, removal from the, the, the city. You know, sewage and, you know, putting it into, to the lawns. And in addition to that, we also have a board of appeal. So residents can actually appeal whether, you know, they think it's right and just for them to, you know, to to move their downspouts. What I find interesting is that there is not a board of appeals for Nick Seisland, the city manager, to make a unilateral decision to suspend or revoke a resident park pass. So, so let's think about that for a minute. We have a brand new ordinance regarding downspouts. And yet the city manager can make a unilateral decision without any sort of appeal for the resident to ask to, for that for that pass to be reinstated or ask for at least some evidence that a crime or an attempt of crime was committed. So I'm asking city council to, to add a board of appeals for situations such as that when park passes are suspended or revoked. And now let's talk about the dog park. I hope that backers landscaping is upholding their bargain to maintain the dog park for two years. I hope that backers pay for that hay that's on the, the lawn inside the dog park. I hope that backers maintenance crew actually laid down the, the hay or the straw and it wasn't on the city dime in our maintenance folks. And now let's talk about the residents who actually purchased a key fob. I'm sure they're very disappointed that it's, you know, the dog park is closed indefinitely. We knew that there was a drainage issue there before the dog park was even talked about, you know, being in site A when they looked at site D and other sites within Patterson Park. They knew that this area was bad for drainage. And so why don't we look at some of the land that the, the city owns and think maybe we could relocate the dog park from Patterson Park into a more appropriate city-owned lot. And then maybe backers can actually install the fence the correct way. So it's not backwards. So maybe when the crew actually has to lock the, the dog park, they don't have to use a, a padlock. And in a lock, they can actually use the, the key lock. So it doesn't look so trashy, I guess. I mean, this is Patterson Park. This is Gross Point Park. And we have a padlock on the fence to a dog park because the fence was installed backwards. So why don't we rethink the dog park? And why don't we add a board of appeal so that my park pass isn't taken away by Nick Seisland? Because he doesn't really. He, he thinks that a dog park is basically putting a backward fence around a bit of like, that's my time. Thanks.
Thank you. Next public comment is Cheryl. If you could please state your name and city of residence and please go ahead for us.
Good evening, City Manager Seisland. My name is Cheryl Denman of Pemberson Road. And on behalf of all Gross Point Park residents, I'd like to thank Mayor Danner and Councilman Robson for the decades of wonderful service to this fine community. This following comment comes from our former neighbor, Mr. Terrence Collins, now of Harvard Road. I, Terrence Collins, have been a resident of the Gross Point Park for twenty-one years and in the park for the last fourteen. Resident of Gross Point for twenty-one, the park for fourteen. We moved to this area specifically for the schools and great parks in all five of the points. For many years, like many of us, I was the only vaguely familiar with what was going on in local politics. The pandemic forced me to start paying attention, mostly to what was happening in our schools, but also what was happening in Gross Point Park. The school board meeting takes precedence tonight. I am puzzled why some of our council members and candidates seem fixated on spreading rumors and inventing facts that simply never happened. They talk about how council positions are supposed to be nonpartisan and then accept large amounts of partisan money from donors outside of the gross point. Some have raised and spent more money than many candidates running for state office here in Michigan. The ones screaming the loudest seem to be the most influenced by those outside of this community. And then there are those candidates who believed in what they stand for strongly enough to put their own money behind candidacy. Each funding over thirty percent of their own campaign. Lastly, we should look at all of our mayoral candidates. Two of which, one has raised and spent ten times more than the other one. Why and to what end? My votes will go to the candidates who seem to have a solid grip of what fiscal responsibility looks like. Michelle, Max, Christine and Thomas. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Danner, I have no more spoken public comments for tonight.
Okay, thank you. That closes the public comment, non-agenda items. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. We have all in favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, none. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, council. And Jim, you and I get to ride off into the sunset.
Yes, we do, sir.
Have a good.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.